All right, everybody, you ready? All right, hello, everybody, welcome. We're going to begin with our work session this evening. We do have some interviews to conduct before we get down to reviewing the agenda. Let's see, take it from the top on down. I think first, for the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee, we have Megan Sparks.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can pull that down a little bit.
Okay.
There you go. So tell us a little bit about what inspired you to throw your name in the ring for serving on this particular committee, what qualification you think you will bring to it to make it do its work better.
Sure. So I've lived in South Kingstown for about 10 years now. I live here with my family. I have three little kids who are in the public school, a local real estate agent. And recently, starting in March, I started working at the Johnny Cake Center. So I worked for them as a housing specialist to try to help some of the local families find housing in the area. So from that, it has sort of morphed into me being very interested in affordable housing and what is currently going on with the housing market in South Kingstown and actually all over Rhode Island in the United States.
Questions?
Can you just elaborate a little bit more? I know affordable housing is a very complex issue and it's not easily solved by any one thing.
Right.
Can you just share a little bit about your, what ideas you might have or the way you think we could add tools to the toolbox?
So what I've been working on with the Johnny Cake Center has been some of the local families who have gotten housing vouchers from the Housing Authority. So recently, in March, they distributed a bunch of vouchers, so I tried to help some of the local families or individuals stay in the area. Most of them have jobs here, they have connections to the community, and a large percentage of them actually had to return their vouchers. So working with them was, I mean, for me, it was heartbreaking because they looked at these vouchers as actually an opportunity for them to find stable housing, and we were unable to find anything in the area. So what I started doing with the Johnny Cake Center was, I went through and we wanted to see what the actual rents are in the area. So, you know, it's very, the sales prices of homes is, you know, being a real estate agent, I can determine that. But through the rentals, the question was, is there anything affordable that we can find? And we found that a one-bedroom is about $1,200 to $1,600. A two-bedroom is almost $2,000, three-bedroom and up, ranging from like $2,500 to $3,000 a month. So those numbers are astronomical, and they're really actually very hard to find, year-long rentals for a variety of different reasons. When you switch to the housing sales prices, you see that in the last five years, they've increased over 33% in the state, well, in South Kingstown. So trying to help buyers, I recently helped a family who was a South King, they were South Kingstown residents, they wanted to stay in the area, they had five kids in the local school systems, IEPs, and they couldn't afford anything in the area, and they bought a house in Warwick. So again, I really, as a community member, what I like about this community is the diversity, and you've got people from different socioeconomic backgrounds, and I feel like it's starting to, you know, shift where it's getting to be completely unaffordable to a large percentage of the people who are currently living here.
Other questions? Well, very good. Thank you for answering those questions. We will let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I believe, we have a reappointment, potentially, for Charlene Trainum, who is currently on the Housing Authority, would like to be reappointed.
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
So maybe begin just by telling us about your experience so far and what you're looking forward to continuing doing.
Okay. Well, thank you for the first appointment. It's been a pleasure working with you all. So, right now, as Megan talked about a lot of the stuff that we're also dealing with, we ended up having some vouchers, and we served nine SK families. Five went to North Kingstown, three went to Charleston, and one went to Newport. And then we had a good amount go back. So now, we're in another wave where next month, we have 30 more vouchers. So we're trying to stagger them because of the housing situation right now. We only want to give out 10, and then 10, and then 10 to give people time to look for stuff, so we're not inundating everybody looking in the same place for the same thing. And Megan Sparks is a big part of that process for us. We've ended up doing, we didn't have a preference list here in SK, so we went ahead and worked with the Rhode Island Housing, and we was able to get a preference list here in SK. So it's on a point system, so now we can actually have our residents be the first ones to receive our vouchers. So it goes SK local, then it goes working and elderly disabled, then veterans, homeless, and then date timestamp. So SK is 25 points, the working elderly disabled is 20 points, veterans are 15 points, and homeless is 10. So if you add them up, if somebody is a SK resident and a veteran and homeless, those points add up, so that's how we determine who will be getting the vouchers first. We are also working for future repairs with a place called Project Architectural Firm, LOB, which is for further repairs for now, for the present. We are looking to redevelop, but we need to take care of the needs of the people now, and it's, there's a lot, a lot of repairs that need to be done, so we're trying to get funding for that as, and we also are trying to get funding from you as well, to try to clean up some of the now things that are safety issues. The laundry facility is almost done. That's a big, big checkmark for us and the tenants. They've been wait, I personally lived there over 15 years ago, and this was the issue of the laundry then, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get on the board, because I lived there for a very short time, but in that short time, the tenants still haven't gotten what they want. So now, we as a board, and as we hired a new director, we have to get a rapport with our tenants, and we need to, for them to trust us. And so we're trying to develop that now, so we can eventually have like a council or resident council. So when it's time for redevelopment, we can get the stakeholders in place to try to make the decisions and have the tenants' voices be heard. We are doing things with the playground. I was at a Zoom meeting with Buzz Connor, he invited us, and that turned into a faith-based community coming and asking, what can we do to help? So we're working with Pete and Claudia Swan. We're also working with Matt Divitt to try to replace the playgrounds. We're also trying to find a way to, in wanting to redevelop, we don't want to ask for a whole bunch of money and then it be torn down. So in our research, we want to try to find somewhere where whatever playground pieces we put up, that they can be taken down and stored until our new development. So we're looking into things like that. We're also in the process of starting a nonprofit for SK HA Service and Development Corporation. We need a IRS tax exemption, and I'm still new to this, but that tax exemption, I know that certain entities can't help with certain things, that we have to be able to have our own nonprofit in order to get some monies from the outside to try to get some things done, consultations and things. We're looking into reestablishing the Families Self-Sufficiency Program, and we want to try to hire part-time staff to support that. We only have two staff on our housing, which is the executive director and the assistant. So in order to bring that back, we would need some more help and support, so we're looking into ways that we can do that. Let's see, oh, we're working with URI to do the survey for redevelopment as well. So they're doing oral, and they're doing historical information to try to pull together everything, the needs, the wants, the history, what worked, what didn't work. So we're pulling all that together through URI, and we did get a grant for that. Let's see, we're working with the Boys and Girls Club also. We're going to be doing some program at Critters Corner Middle School in partnership with the Johnny Cake Center to help, a leadership, but it's a community-based thing because we want to do the trickle-down effect. We want them to be citizens in school first, and then we want to bring it out and have them actually be in the community to find out what roles they can play in the community, in the larger community. We're looking into partnerships with the Center for Mediation on Tenant Conflict. That's a big thing, and if we're going to do redevelopment, it would be nice to train tenants and things of how things are supposed to look, how you treat a landlord, how your rights as a tenant, and what the landlord is supposed to do for you. So we want to get all that in place, so when something does come about, our tenants will be ready and will be good community leaders and community participants as well. And that's about it. So that's, I want to continue to do all these things, and it's been real exciting, it's been a really, a learning curve, the Open Meetings Act and those little things. I'm actually the vice chair, so I'm learning as we go, and I really enjoy this, and I'm hoping to work with you guys for the next five years.
Thank you. That was quite a lot that you've been doing. Thank you so much. Any questions for Charlene?
Just a comment, thank you for that update, because we don't hear it very often, and it's useful to us to, for you to come and tell us everything that's happening. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your passion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good, Charlene, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll let you know.
You're welcome.
And then, I believe, we have a couple candidates for the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee. This is a committee, I'm not sure it's actually met anytime recently, but we'll maybe find out from our applicants here. Let's start with Mr. Marcello. Good evening.
I'm a retired career public administrator. I retired from the state of Rhode Island at the Department of Administration as Assistant Director for Special Projects. My basic background is in project management, mostly in IT projects and in systems development. To this end, I also taught at the graduate schools. I taught strategic planning and program evaluation at Worcester State College and also at the, at URI. I also have another avocation where I retired from the US Army after ranking Colonel. But my background basically is in project management. I continue to work in the area of public administration. I work at the SK Rec Center part-time, and also I'm a moderator at the, for the Board of Elections here in town. I can't comment on the activities of committee because they've never met, so I really can't really address that. I do have an interest, though, I've been a resident for 37 years, I live on Bob's Pond Road, so I travel on 138 quite a bit, and obviously, there's, needs some improvement. When I interviewed for this position back in 2015, there were some issues as far as archaeological digs and other Kappa-related issues. I inquired with the Planning Department here maybe three years ago as to what was the status of the, of the committee, and they said that DOT, RIDOT, pushed back the project a few years, so I, I think, I think the target date was 2023 or something like that, so that's all I know right now.
I appreciate the update. Any questions for Mr. Marcello? Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point of information, if you didn't get that, Tom is a part-time employee with the town at the Rec Center, but according to the solicitor, there's no conflict of interest there.
Good. Mr. Rosen.
Good evening.
Evening. Welcome back.
I can't, I'm, this is a reappointment to the same committee. I was appointed to this committee, I think, in 2014, and the committee has not met since then. The only update I can give you is that the last meeting was in 2013. I do have the minutes for that meeting. At that time, the committee determined that 90% of their objectives had been reached at that time. Since that time, though, since I've lived in Kingston, I know that the Department of Transportation has done a lot of work up there. As a matter of fact, there have been two projects that have gone through Kingston. There's still a lot of work to be done, because there's still plenty of cars that run along that road. I sit on the zoning board of review, and I know from some traffic studies that have been done, that there's over 20,000 cars that go through that particular area of our town every day. So it's a lot of problems there. The biggest problem that I see, having no expertise in this area, is that one of the trouble spots is the connection of South Road to Old North Road and the backup there. And now, South Road has become a default for people who want to get to Wakefield and do not want to go down 108. They come down South Road, and South Road's even becoming more crowded. And if you ever go by on the corner of 138 and 108, you know that in the morning and in the evening, there's backed-up traffic, all the way back to about a block from my house, as a matter of fact, on South Road. So there's some work to be done. As was indicated, the Department of Transportation did have some eyes looking at 2022 as a possible date that they had put other things off on. I don't know, know nothing about that as such, but I would assume that you probably know more than I do in that regard. I'm willing to stay on the committee, but if they're not going to meet, there's no reason to not be, to stay on that committee. I have other appointments. I sit on two other committees right now, which meet a lot more often than those committees. So I'll leave it up to you on what you want to do.
All right, very good. Any questions for Bill? All right, well, thank you for your continued willingness to serve on this committee and all the other service that you do for the town. We'll let you know.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I think that concludes our interviews for the evening. Let's proceed with the agenda.
Good evening. Before we get to the agenda, just one housekeeping item having to do with the schedule for the budget process. As you all know, we had sent out a schedule, there's a couple of dates of conflict, just wanting to know if any others had any date issues. If not, we will go back and look at options for making sure that the five of you can be present for all of the budget dates within the timeframe, as advised by the Charter.
Did anybody else have any input scheduling conflict-wise?
Okay, so we've got one, instead of December 15th, we will hold, we'll schedule the initial budget hearing for Thursday, December 16th, or we have the option to wait until Monday, December 20th, but if the 16th...
Terry, I'd prefer December 20.
Okay, and everyone's fine with that? Okay. And then, in place of Wednesday, April 13th, the second operating budget public hearing could be held on Monday, April 18th. And that is the only other date that we'd be able to secure that particular meeting without shifting the entire budget schedule, and it's the last date for the Charter that that can be held. Does that work for everyone? Okay. We will update this and get it back out to the councils. Onto the agenda, just one license, new license to be taken under consideration for Mooresfield Estate, doing business as Historic Mooresfield. I believe the applicant may be here. Otherwise, all of the other consent agenda items under licenses are renewals. If we skip to communications, items A, B, and C are all related in some fashion to the AFL-CIO Mailer investigation, and also item G also has to do with the school MOA on children of school staff from out of town. So council can choose how they want to address those. Item E is a proposed adoption of a land acknowledgement from Councilwoman Bergner, and the council wants to discuss that.
We talked about it in July, and just as Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day came forward, and remembered that we hadn't really come back to that, so I drafted something for Terry to put back on the agenda for this meeting, but my hope is that we approve a land acknowledgement policy that we just read at every public meeting, that we acknowledge that we are on the land of the Narragansett Tribe as we conduct our own business. So you saw that, I just didn't get, it just got a little bit lost from July, just wanted to make sure going forward we had it, so that's all.
If there are no questions, we also have Communication M, which is in regards to the proposed development on the UFD property on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road for construction of a new fire, firehouse, and also an EMS garage as well. That's currently under development review with the Planning Board. It was on the last Planning Board meeting. It will be, it has been carried over to tomorrow evening's Planning Board meeting, where the process requires that the Planning Board take it under consideration and then make a recommendation to the zoning board, which would be the next step in the process. So typically, that is the process related to this, this type of project.
Is that, are they seeking any type of ordinance or zoning changes that's going to come to our level?
This process would not, as I understand it, not reach the council level. The only difference with this particular project is that the town is involved to the degree that there's an EMS building that would be constructed on the site as well. So the council authorized on June 14th the town to negotiate with UFD for a memorandum of understanding to enter into a lease agreement, which is to basically pay back the cost of the construction of the building over a period of time. That MOU is not completed to date, and I believe the council would wait until there was, was a final development review and/or approval before moving forward with any MOU.
Mike, there's still a quick question for you. When we authorized the negotiation of that, we did not authorize the execution of that, so upon negotiation, it would come back to us for final execution, is that correct?
No question about it. That will definitely be coming back to you, but as Terry mentioned, it won't even come before you unless it makes it through the process in both planning and zoning, because there'd be no basis for you to be voting on it unless it makes it through that process.
Thank you.
So I, I, when June, when we discussed this in June and voted, I didn't support it. I actually went to the site for the Mattoonik Schoolhouse Fire. I don't know if anyone have been there yet. I highly recommend it because perception was wrong. The lot is a very deep lot, the, the structure that the town would be building is behind the current fire station. So the fire station itself could be renovated by UFD. What the town wants to do by putting the EMS there is, is that's what's causing all the, the, the community to be so upset, because they're going to pave this entire lot, I mean, much, much more of this beautiful lot, half of it's rolling grass to the land trust is going to be paved. It also is going to disrupt a border, there's a neighbor there. We, the town, are in, can be, are putting this project forward, and the neighbor there, we're going to completely destroy a conifer buffer that's, like, really beautiful to mask that. As I understand it, the community, or especially that neighbor, has a very good relationship with the fire station. It's more the disruption of a buffer to proceed with the town's plans for the EMS. That, that buffer really protects them from seeing that, so I, I think that we've gone a little bit too quickly, and to, we should really look at other locations, because we are really disrupting a project for our needs as a town, and I wasn't, not sure in June, and we voted, and there was some concerns about, we didn't explore every option for the town to place EMS somewhere else. We all know that EMS is important, we all know that EMS is necessary. We just need to feel like we've done, I want to make sure we've done our due diligence. When you look at that lot again, and you look at what we're going to do, we are going to clear-cut and pave an entire lot for the town, not, not for UFD, because UFD could move forward and renovate the station. I highly recommend, it was eye-opening to see what's going to be there, and I don't know if I'm wrong about the paving, I felt like 8% was not going to be paved of this entire lot.
So not to take up too much time, because I know you're running out of time here, but the Planning Board did raise some of these questions at the last meeting. There have been ongoing discussions between the, as I understand it, the engineer for UFD, and our Planning Department has also gotten involved to see if there can be some adjustment. Now, again, that would have to come up, the Planning Board will see this again. The buffer came up as, as an item to be examined and looked at how other options might, other design options might fit. I, I only tell the council this because it's still at the Planning Board phase, and that is on the agenda tomorrow night. There may be more information at that time from, from the USC.
When it comes up again, I'm going to, I'm going to want to know how much of that entire lot is being paved, because seeing is believing, you would change your mind.
Yeah, and I want to echo some of that. I did take some time and walk that lot as well, and if you haven't taken time to walk it, I, it's, it's very eye-opening, so I would encourage you to, to look into it as well.
All right, and when we get to this item on the agenda, Craig, perhaps, could come up and just sort of give us some, see him back there?
Yes, sir.
All right, what's next?
And just to go back to, item L is a communication from Councilwoman Kelso with regard to the candidate, interviewing candidates for appointment for alternate members of the Board of Canvassers. As we go down this list to appointments, in addition to the interviews you did this evening, there's also a memorandum from myself with regard to the Steering Committee for the 300th anniversary of the town. That is a recommendation for a total of 17 applicants. One was inadvertently left off the list, but you received a subsequent communication to make sure that that 17th person was added. And as mentioned, that committee is really, everybody, anybody who wants to be part of that Steering Committee is welcome to join, we're looking for all segments of the community to have input on the 300th anniversary celebration. Under New Business, we have the bid award for, recommendation for the Mattoonik Beach Road Protection Improvement Project, that is Phase Two. You received a memo from John Shock on that recommendation. We have the extension, a resolution for extending the emergency declaration. Again, just as a reminder, the town is consistent with the governor's emergency declaration. For the most part, at this point, it is to remain eligible for any type of funding that may come up, come up in the future, to be reimbursed from, from the government. We have an award of bid recommendation for recycling receptacles, and that would be covered by a, by a grant through the RIRRRC. Item G is the discussion by the council- Item G is the discussion by the council on the rules of conduct. We have item H, which is discussion on an ordinance establishing regulation on foul. And we have item I, which is the council discussing and potentially acting on the closed state police incident report. And also, I skipped over it, but the town solicitor's report is on here this evening, and Mike will have a few items to discuss with the council as well. Are there any questions?
All right. Any other topics? We have perhaps 30 seconds before we get to 7:30. Thank you for going through that for us, Terri. Susan, are we ready to begin? Welcome, everyone, to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. The date is Monday, October 25th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Mackenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
And Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Rory Mackenzie, I'll make a motion to approve four A and B.
I'll second.
So moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to item five, the consent agenda.
Rory Mackenzie, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Just rose second.
Moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously as well, and that brings us to item six, licenses. Six A is a resolution granting a tourist accommodations license to Mooresfield Estate LLC, doing business as Historic Mooresfield. This is an app of 782 Mooresfield Road for three rooms, six persons, application by Jeffrey Green. Is Jeffrey here? Please come up to the podium, state your name for the record.
I am Jeffrey Green.
Welcome. Tell us about your Mooresfield Estate.
Oh, well, I think everyone's familiar with the property next to the Farmer's Daughter on Mooresfield Road. It's a property that was actually in bad shape for many years. It underwent a great restoration probably about 10 years ago, and then sat unsold for many years until we purchased it. It was our idea, my wife Christine and I, to use it as a bed and breakfast. So we have furnished it in a historically accurate manner and really have no plans to change anything about the house itself or the grounds. We really like it the way it is, and we want to continue to use it as it is. It's really, the best thing about it is that it has never been altered, and we intend to keep it that way.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a beautiful house from the road. I always had.
Oh, thank you.
Any else? All right. Very good. Do I hear a motion?
Rory Mackenzie, I'll make a motion to approve six A.
Deb Bergner, I'll second.
So moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously as well, and that will bring us very quickly. Good luck. Congratulations. Item seven, communications. Communications A dated August 19th, October 7th, October 20th, from former school superintendent Linda Savistano, in response to information added to the town's mailer investigation report at the town council meeting held on September 13th, providing information regarding a school department MOA COVID extension that was discussed at the town council meeting held on October 12th. That has been received. What would we like to do with this one? I will note Linda Savistano requested that we read this into the record as it appears on the agenda and as part of the agenda, I think it's part of the public record, so I'm not going to go into reading the whole thing unless people request me to do that. But, yeah, discussion?
I'm just, I'm 100% sure that she's aware of how public meetings work, and she knows that she could come here and speak at any time. So she would have her five minutes to speak to the community, correct?
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion that we place item seven A on file.
I'll second.
So moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Seven B is an email dated October 8th, 2021, from Greg Sweet regarding questions concerning the AFL-CIO mailer investigation report and state police incident report. That has been received and placed on file. Mike, I know that you took this email from Greg initially. If you want to sort of give us a rundown?
Sure. Although obviously the town council is my client, and I'm accountable to all of you from time to time, I do my best to help out residents who reach out to me as solicitor to help at least point them in the right direction with questions that come up, whether it's about zoning or inspections or the building official or neighborhood issues. I am more than happy, as part of my duties as a solicitor, to help out along those lines. When Mr. Sweet asked if I could respond to some questions regarding the report, of course I said yes. It was in that same spirit of being able to assist, direct, and help someone. When I got the questions, basically it was a reopening of the AFL-CIO report. The questions were more like interrogatories. Why did you do this? Why didn't you do that? What did you leave out? What did you put in, et cetera? Went well, well beyond what my obligations are, number one. But more importantly, the council, when it directed the investigation to take place, was very specific about what you were looking for. It basically came down to, in so many words, who did this? How did these names get, you know, to the printing company? And we did a number of things in my office to obtain that information, everything from filing a lawsuit, seeking affidavits, all the investigatory things you could do. It resulted in us in getting the answers to those questions. So I believe the report speaks for itself. I'm really not ready to get into attorney-client issues and methods and means of the investigation. So that's why I decline to answer each of those 20-something questions.
Thank you. Discussion? Or motion?
Well, I just wanted to speak for a second. So Greg, I'm looking over your questions. It's a long list, and Mike is correct in saying that the scope of what we charged him with was to investigate the mailer and how the information got out and who was involved with that. We know who was responsible, that the main players were Stacey Bosioni and Linda Savistano. We did not investigate or ask any questions about Build RI and all of that avenue. We did not ask any questions about the funding and how much money and all of those. So he doesn't have that information? We don't have that information. We didn't go in that direction. Our main concern, based on the meetings that we had where many, many parents came forward, where how, who gave out my children's names and why? And so that's really, we could give you that, but that's in the report. But a lot of these things, we didn't, we didn't ask if they took notes at Build RI. We didn't ask, you know, who were the donors, things like that. So we can't help you there, and I just want you to feel comfortable asking us any questions as individuals, because like has been said, we can share with you anything that we know because that report is now public.
I just want to reiterate that we did vote unanimously here on August 10th to put that report forward as the work product from the investigation. Contained within that report is the statement, this concludes the investigation. So the investigation is concluded. We did amend it. We voted to amend that in mid-September, and again, the amended report contains that same language, that we voted to conclude the investigation. That's where I stand. Unless we're going to open another investigation into something, that's something we would discuss privately if there was something to investigate. But as it stands right now, this council voted to conclude the investigation by putting forth the report.
Further discussion or motion?
I would just like to conclude that. There is, there is information that specifically that we didn't always include in the report. Like I'm holding the questions that we asked all the school. I mean, we did ask all the school employees questions that didn't get in the report. I mean, we have information. You know, when Linda Savistano says she didn't give out the mailer and what she said she didn't do, she does, she sort of was misleading in a document. I mean, like, we didn't, we didn't put everything out there, but we put the information, we answered the question. So initially, what I'm saying is in May, Linda was misleading. She said she didn't have a role. Later, we learned that she had a role. So we don't write all the twists and turns to get to the truth, but the truth is, two people had a role in putting that information together and sending out a mailer. I don't know, is that helpful to you, Greg?
I'll make a motion that we place item seven B on file.
I'll second.
If motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Seven C, emails from Sean Cody, Lou Kristowski, and Nathan Barrington regarding discussion of the mailer investigation and state police incident report at the last town council meeting are received and placed on file. What would we like to do with those ones?
In Nate Barrington's email, he does ask, it was two weeks ago, he does ask about doing, I don't know what he's saying right here. He wants to, it may be worth having an MPA and looking at all the consultants we have hire. Terri, do you see that part in the, this? Is it worth addressing? And that's the only thing that I thought may be worth commentary about, from what Nate Barrington's saying. As the town seems really fond of consultants, it may be worth having the URI MPA program do a project on the town and determine why we do not have enough people employed that can vet problems or projects, thus reducing the outflow of tax money, which goes up every year. That was one, that's his, he's asking us to look at something outside of the mailer.
What I can tell you in terms of how the town has partnered with the university in the past is that there are certain programs that, like the landscape architecture program, that will do projects related to something that the town may have in the pipeline in terms of capital improvements. There are the College of Nursing and the College of Gerontology, work with the Senior Center. Those are the types of partnerships and relationships that we have with the university. I, this is, this is a broad kind of recommendation. I don't know that the town's ever developed a relationship with the MPA program at URI.
I also wasn't sure, and he's not here to ask that question, if he's more concerned with why we use consultants, when we bring consultants, how they help bring projects forward more quickly. I mean, I read that, too. There might be some misunderstanding about why we would hire an additional person or firm to do X or Y. That might be, he's not here, so.
Perhaps when we are getting into the budget season and we're looking sort of at, you know, the amount that we're spending on consultants, we can have a conversation about whether there's a way to bring any of that in-house.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a broad statement relative to this communication, the previous two. I think unfortunately, this issue has sort of bogged down the council for the last few months, and obviously it should take a lot of attention on our part because it is something serious, something of great concern. I think we've kind of reached a point here where we're almost over this situation. The parties at fault are no longer in positions to do what they can do anymore. The superintendent's been terminated. Two school committee members have resigned, and the other parties involved have been removed from respective boards related to their involvement. And I'm pleased with the investigation and the report that we've been involved in here. I think the facts are clear to us that, in our opinion, there has no criminal activity on any parties involved. However, I would just like to say publicly that if there is, and the state police has found facts to warrant charging someone with criminal charges, I'm happy to cooperate and allow charges to stick to anybody who's involved in that situation. But I think there's so much more progress for the town to achieve. I think it's great, or it's best for us to put this behind us, keep moving forward. And there's a lot of great things here in town that we look forward to doing in our term, and I would just love to see this behind us. Hopefully it is. Over the last few months, we've obviously been dealing with this, and it is something of great concern. But I'm hopefully, I'm hopeful that this is almost near nailing the coffin, and we can focus on bigger and better things here in SK, because there's a lot going on other than this, and that should be our main focus. So I just wanted to kind of make that statement. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and just to echo what you said, Rory, it's time, and I know that we keep receiving emails from Savistano, and I almost feel like it's her hope at this point that we keep going with this, and it's her aim to distract us from the other important things that we need to do in time in town, and I'm just not willing to give into that. So I think, you know, everything you said I agree with, and if something comes up in the future, we'll address it then. But, you know, it's time to stop giving her the attention that she seems to desire.
Do I hear a motion on seven C?
Move that we put item seven C on file.
Second.
All right, so moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Seven E is an email dated October 12th, 2021, from Councilwoman Deborah Bergner, proposing adoption of the following land acknowledgement statement. This has been received and placed on file. It says, "The town of South Kingstown pays homage to the indigenous people of the land on which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, and reconcile, and partner with the Narragansett Tribe whose land and water we benefit from today." So Deb, if you want to.
Thank you. So in July, we talked about developing a land acknowledgement statement that would be hopefully read at every meeting. Things sort of kind of went really quickly, July and August and September, and so I wanted to make sure that we brought this back forward. We read some acknowledgement statement at every public meeting that we were at that recognizes that we are on the tribal lands of the Narragansett. So I think I did edit this once, because I did have an extra and, and. Sorry about that. Maybe that version didn't come forward, but.
Well, we can adopt it, yeah. And so it's not written in here, but we can pass a resolution. And so it's not written in here, but we can pass a resolution right now because this is on the agenda, Mike, you know, committing ourselves to this land acknowledgement statement. So this would be each meeting of the town council.
Probably before, right after the pledge and we sit down, just read it and then open the meeting, if you're comfortable.
So this has come up before, and we've had some concerns, and one was legally, legal concerns were brought forth about, so I just want that to be addressed. And Jess, you had brought up the fact that we had not brought the tribe in, the actual verbiage of this. And I'm wondering, Deb, if you had a chance to do that.
I spoke with Terry about this because there's several weeks in emails. So they did reach out right after that July meeting and didn't have any communications back.
That's correct. So I think one of the distinctions that could be made is, the town has made a couple of efforts to connect with the tribal leaders in order to get a work session with the council. That was in relation to, Councilwoman Rose, you had mentioned that the land acknowledgement proclamation, if you recall, the town of Warren had a lengthy proclamation that included the particular land parcels and tribes that were affiliated with them. This shorter kind of acknowledgement is different from what was originally proposed. And I think your concern, Councilwoman Rose, was before the town goes and drafts this long proclamation, that we try to connect with the Narragansett tribe and have some input. This particular statement is a bit more brief. It speaks to kind of a broader acknowledgement, but again, it's entirely up to the council as to how you want to proceed with that. There's still the need to connect and really have a work session and a discussion based on your goals and objectives with the Narragansett tribe.
Yes, I agree with what you had said regarding my feelings about the proclamation. I like this. I think it gets us moving in the right direction, and if we need to revisit it when we meet with the tribe, we can do that then.
All right. So are folks happy with this particular language? Deb, is this something you took from another place, an inspiration for, or is this something that you just drafted yourself?
I did some research. I looked at other land acknowledgement statements. I read URI's land acknowledgement from last week. I included it in the email attachment, so you could read the full thing. I don't think we need to do a very long statement, but I think it is appropriate and fitting. If you look, the Narragansett tribe covered all of what is now Rhode Island and larger, and I think it's just the right thing to do.
Any further discussion, wordsmithing that people may want? We probably want to remove that and. Anything else? Or I suppose we need, do I hear a motion on this?
So I'll make a motion to make a resolution adopting the land acknowledgement as it's written here, to be read before town council meetings.
With, may I amend, with that removal of the additional and?
Yes.
Terry? Susan? You see where it is? The extra and?
Terry, we have a motion. Did you second that, Deb?
Second.
Okay. So we motion second. Any further discussion? I think it's, you know, long overdue, Deb, so thank you for suggesting this. I was really pleased over the weekend to hear that the site of the Great Swamp Massacre has been returned to Narragansett tribal hands. So we're making steps here locally, and it's great to see. All right. So we motion, you second. Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. 7G is an email dated October 13th, 2021, from Kate Johnson concerning the school department's memorandum of agreements. This has been placed on file. We briefly mentioned that Linda Savistano had sent some communications earlier. One of them was partially in relation to this. I don't know, Mike, do you want to, or Terry, discuss what was covered there?
This particular communication is relative to the memorandum of agreement that the school committee and the school superintendent's office entered into with the teachers' union in order to allow for children of school department staff members to, who live out of town, to attend South Kingstown schools with particular stipulations involved with that. The question that Ms. Johnson had, I believe, was in relation to how many children, out-of-town children, are currently attending South Kingstown schools. My office has reached out to the school superintendent's office to gather that information. They have gotten back to my office to say they are working on gathering that. We do not have it at this point, but when we do, we will pass it along.
I'm wondering if, why it's taking so long to get that, but it makes me think that there are a lot more than we think there might be. So I don't know why that would take much time at all. You can, I don't know.
I too wonder that because they all need to be registered. They all need to have mailing addresses. So I'm a little disappointed in the school department's response to us, that we can't get, it's a whole number, whether it's five or whether it's 12. It's not organizing a lot of data, so I'm a little disappointed. I know that the community is curious to know what the impact is. You know, Kate Johnson is not a regular citizen that comes to the podium, and I think that the community would like to know that information. So I don't know how to communicate that disappointment to the superintendent, but it is concerning that you can't put your, that he could not put that information together in two weeks.
I have a few questions on this, Terry, if I could ask you here. This MOA COVID extension, is this only applicable during times of COVID, like an emergency measure that can't take place during normal times?
That originally was the agreement. This particular MOA, according to what I have in front of me here, indicates that whereas the parties would like to continue the below agreement beyond the COVID-19 pandemic, and wherefore in consideration of mutual promises contained herein, the parties hereby agree to the following additions to the CBA. So this is beyond.
This is something within the autonomy of the superintendent at any time?
According to the information that we have, yes, it's a standard MOA that can be authorized by the school committee and signed by the superintendent.
So for these students who are children of the teachers that are not residents of South Kingstown, does the money still follow them to South Kingstown? Meaning, do we still get the money from the state, the funding that would come to us for the student enrolled in South Kingstown schools?
I don't know the answer to that, Rory. I'll have to.
This benefit has been provided to teachers and principals, and the money does not come. We are just bringing them in, and they are coming to school here. We just don't know where they are and how many there are.
So financially speaking, this is only burdening us and not benefiting us?
Correct.
The, it's specified in here that enrollment cannot cause a class size overage, it cannot result in or create the need to expand a particular class, grade, or program, and cannot result in the need to hire additional teaching staff. The superintendent shall determine what school and what classroom the children shall be placed in.
So I do just want to add, this started because of COVID, and I would hesitate to say that there is no benefit to it during COVID. I think that having, I know what I see in my district a lot is that teachers are out because their kids are quarantined in other districts, and so I think during COVID, maybe there is a benefit to this, where we can keep teachers in school, they don't have to stay home with their kids if their district has other. You know, like today, I had a PD day, and South Kingstown has one on Thursday, so what do I do with my kids if they're in a different district, right? But outside of COVID, I don't see how this is beneficial. I don't, I know other towns, other cities require parents to pay tuition for their children to join them in their district. I did it when my son was in preschool in Warwick.
And I just want to take a second to mention that, you know, this is school department policy. Looks like it was voted on by the school committee, effectuated by the superintendent at the time. And, you know, the town council really doesn't meddle in the policies of the school department. You have some broad oversight of their budget, but it's good to keep that in mind.
I agree with you, but I also believe that it's much easier to communicate with elected officials at the town council table than it is to go to the school committee. They can't respond to you. They can't really ask questions. You know, she couldn't come with this topic and get an answer, and the community wouldn't have that information. So I'm pretty sure this is a better conduit to the community to speak at our podium than to go to the school committee and speak there. So that's probably why she's here, and others.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to, can we refer her email to the superintendent, to the school committee? If so, I'd like to make that motion.
Well, maybe what I was thinking is, why don't you just move to continue to the next meeting, so we have the opportunity to get the information which they're gathering and run out at the next meeting.
Okay. So I move to continue 7G to our next meeting, and hopefully by then, we will have those numbers from the superintendent.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. 7J, a letter dated October 18th, 2021, from Andrew Shearer advising of his resignation from the Waterfront Advisory Commission. What would we like to do?
Move that we accept the letter of resignation from Andrew Shearer and thank him for his service to the town.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. 7L, email dated October 19th, 2021, from Councilwoman Deborah Kelso concerning interviewing candidates for appointment as alternate members to the Board of Canvassers. That's been received.
I've been hesitant to make those appointments as alternates because we haven't been able to interview. So I guess I don't understand, we ask the, both the Republican Committee and the Democratic Committee for five names, and then just appoint the top, the person at the head of the list. I don't, I don't understand the process, I guess. We just went through reappointing people to the Route 138, or interviewing them for reappointment to the 138 Committee that hasn't met in, I think 2012 was the last time they met, yet we interview them for reappointment. This is a very important board, and I think we should be able to speak to the applicants from both parties. We only have one from the Democratic Party. I think they should add four more, and I think we should have the candidates in for interviews, just like we do any other board and commission.
I just would like to point out that we appointed John Rose as a full member without any interview at all.
And shame on us. Right? And it didn't occur to me, and so now it has. We should be interviewing all candidates. I believe that. In fact, the reappointment interviews started very recently because we felt like we wanted to see the folks and hear from them, and you hear the wonderful things that are happening. So I don't know. My feeling is, if we're going to interview, let's interview everybody. If we're not, then just ask the Republican Party and the Democratic Party for one name, and we'll rubber stamp that.
Ask a question of the town clerk. Or we talked about it at the last meeting, the alternate, if the alternate was appointed, and then we had a vacancy, they don't automatically assume the position, correct? They're just an alt?
That is correct. You would have to make an appointment. It's no different than the zoning board, or the alternate doesn't automatically move. And we interview for the alternates on the zoning board, you know, we interview for those positions. That's all I'm saying. Just looking to standardize our procedure across the board. If we feel like the Board of Canvassers is an outlier, then okay, then we just appoint the person at the top of the list. I just felt like we call everybody forth, we should call everybody forth, or not.
Well, I don't know that the, the language in the charter doesn't say we just appoint the person at the top of the list, I don't believe.
The statute doesn't say that either. The statute, it's a state statute, 1781, I'm sorry, basically says, each of the two parties should give you some names to consider, and then it's up to you to decide who. Now, they can rank them if they want, they can make recommendations, of course, but it's ultimately up to you to make.
Mike, we are limited to the names provided from the respective chairs.
You are limited to the names provided. That is correct. And the statute provides that if someone does not provide a list of names, that you can just appoint someone, from making sure they're from the respective political. I just think in order to consider the people on the list, excuse me, to make a considered decision, an interview would be, would be in order.
All right, more discussion?
Deb, I hear your concern. I do agree. I think it's good to have uniformity as it relates to interviewing certain candidates, especially like across all different committees and boards. I think this is an outlier to the extent that we are limited to the names provided by the respective chairs, the Democratic or Republican Parties. And because we're limited to appointing those names, I'm okay with appointing the top prospect in the opinion of those respective chairs. I think we've kind of been kind of holding off on this too long. We know a lot of these names that have been given to us, and honestly, I think, even though we've gotten five names from one party and one from another, sometimes it's difficult to find people willing to do the duties related to the service that the board does here. So where I'm at here is, I'm okay with appointing the favorites by the respective chairs tonight, but I'm okay with doing some sort of prospective, effective going forward, some sort of process or criteria for going through interviews with these.
Other discussion on this item? From my point of view, I mean, I think Deb makes some great points. You know, if we're interviewing people for a committee that hasn't met in eight years, you'd think we could interview people who are before us to serve on the Board of Canvassers. The security of our elections has probably never been as big a topic as it is currently in this country. So, you know, the Board of Canvassers is helping us manage that here at the local level. So I think that increases the necessity of conducting interviews. So I'm of the same opinion as you, Deb. Do I hear a motion on this item? Can just be placed on file.
I'll make a motion to place this on file.
All right, I will second that discussion. All right, so this is just a motion to place this on file. We'll come to the part of the agenda where we can make appointments later on, if we so choose. But I think we've had a little discussion around this item, and we're probably okay to place it on file. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Is there anyone opposed to this motion? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Item M is a communication from Karisti Mundie, Christian Mundie, and Richard L. and Kristen E. Schwab, expressing concern, concerning expansion of the Union Fire District Station 7, Mattoonik Firehouse on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. This has been received. Before we get too far into these particular communications, I'd just like to have Craig, if you wouldn't mind, give us an update on where things stand, and maybe give us a brief overview of what's happened to this point.
Thank you. Craig Stanley, Chief of EMS. As Terry alluded to, the project is with the, going before the planning board, and eventually the zoning for the project, then it would, it would come to you. We're still looking at this as location to help with response times. We do need, as I've expressed for, for a while now, that we need a third unit, possibly a fourth one in the next five years, and to improve response times in the southern part of South Kingston. So it's still in the process with the, the planning board. So we haven't got to a final decision if this is going to be the project that we're going to go with.
Any questions for the chief always up here? Are you in support of the project, chief?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you in support of the project?
Yes, I'm in support of the location that will, will meet my needs of reducing response times. And of all the locations I've looked at, of course, finding land is a challenge in South Kingston. And my goal has been from, along the Route 1 corridor to improve that. And if we can make it work, I think this is the most efficient and cost-effective way for it to get to where we need to get. From not be able to find land, to be able to get those response times in half.
Safe to say that you've explored all potential alternative options?
Well, the town land that we have wouldn't be suitable for, for a station. The land I've looked at in Green Hill, the wastewater has land there, but we can't build on that. Certainly, if the trust was to provide land, that might be an option. But I'm certainly open to any options we have. But I'm very limited. I've looked at land, and land is not very feasible.
First of all, I'm 100% with the EMS locate, expanding to the southern part of the town. I'm super concerned about that location as, and that for the reasons I said during the work session about the buffer, paving that whole lot back. The construction of it wasn't what I thought it was going to be when we talked about it in June. I didn't support it then. My question was, now, did we actually advertise that we were looking for a parcel of land? I know people have talked to the land trust, or asked, looked at other things. But have we asked-
Not officially. We have not advertised looking for land. I just know looking at the town-owned land, and what the trust owns, and looking at available land that is for sale. Certainly, I would take a donation of land to build station along the Route 1 corridor, but it's pretty tight.
I mean, I just want to be clear, it's not UFD creating this, these community emails. It's the town's project going for EMS. So UFD changing the Mattoonik station and improving it, that can happen. It's the addition of the EMS building in the back that is creating all of this havoc and angst among the community. So the town project, we are doing this to our own community. The Union Fire isn't doing it. We are doing that. So I just, that's why I have a lot of reservations that I want, I had reservations back in June. I don't know if the Mundies are here, but I know the Schwabs are out of town. I did speak to them. But I don't, they are here, so at some point, they may want to come forward. But that, that's how I feel about this. That EMS is important, but the town project, I want to go back out and do more due diligence, but I wasn't the majority vote, so.
One of the things that stood out to me in one of these emails was, you know, how fast vehicles can travel on Schoolhouse Road versus how fast they can travel on Route 1. Can you talk a little bit about what you've done to look into that? Because I'm, I'm very familiar with the area. And, you know, there are, there's wildlife all over the place. The road is narrow. It's two lanes. There are no sidewalks. So is, is response time going to be hindered by that? Whereas on Route 1, you wouldn't be dealing with all that?
Yeah. And we look at, really in South Kingston, there's three speed limits. There's 50, 25, and I believe a 40. And Route 1 is 50. Per our policies, 20 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, with due regard. That is the clause in there. And vast majority of the roads we respond to are at 25 miles an hour. In fact, Curtis Corner, that access point, South Road is a major thoroughfare for us to respond to calls. The police department and us, and we respond on South Road School, Curtis Corner, all of those roads with the same speed limit. I mean, ideally, if I had a location at Route 1 and Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, that would be the ideal location, but that's not available.
I'm just thinking of how windy that is. And I cannot imagine for the life of me an emergency vehicle traveling 45 miles an hour on those twists and turns of Schoolhouse Road.
There are fire trucks.
Right, but I mean-
But we travel on every single road in the town in an emergency response mode, and are very careful about that. But I certainly understand your concern.
So the very engaged community that we have has asked, why can't we go back and use the old police station for EMS? So could you answer that?
Yeah. And let me just, because there's a lot of confusion out there as far as, we have, we have two transport units, and I will deem them as a call to an ambulance. We have one that runs out of the Public Safety Building, the police station. And we have one that runs out of the Public Services Building. So those are two 24-hour trucks that we have. When I started this position, we had one 24-hour truck out of the police station, and one 12-hour truck out of Public Services. My first priority was to make that 24 hours. And we did. By thanks to the town council, town manager's office, we were able to get the positions to do that. But that just brought us to the surface. And I made it very clear that did not solve our response time issue. In fact, I've made it very clear that we need a third truck and a fourth truck to handle. Three things that I'm challenged with is increasing call volume. And we have increased our call volume 18% since October of last year. My other factor is lack of resources. We only have two. And my other factor is real estate. You just can't get there from here. There's no, there's a lot of real estate to cover. We're the largest land towns in, in the state of Rhode Island. So those are my three factors. So adding trucks and reducing response times. But to answer your question, Councilwoman, we have two 24-hour trucks, and we do run out of that location now.
And expanding there wouldn't work. I'm, I'm just going through the, the questions that I get.
Probably not. I'd have to ask John Shock on that question. But, but I can put two trucks there. If, if I'm approved to add the third truck next July, I could run that out of there, but that does not solve my response time to Green Hill. And since 2017, we've had 179 cardiac arrests in, in South Kingston. Of those, over 30 are in that area. So for every 1,000 people, we have a percentage of-
Another question there.
Yes.
Mattoonik Elementary School as a, maybe carving out a piece over there?
Yeah, that's been the discussion. And I know talking to the planning director and some others, there's this issue with the grading. That's certainly not all the option. But again, we're just, we're on, we're still on Mattoonik Beach Road. So that's just moving down the street. I mean, we're still-
Right, but-
Yeah. I certainly would be open to that. I mean-
Right. My issue is when you see that lot, and you see, we are, very nice home, and very nice trees are going to be destroyed because the town wants to put EMS in the back. Not because the fire station is going to get renovated. It's, it's solely the EMS project that's doing that.
Yeah, I can't speak for the UFD, but I know that the station is being reconstructed.
Right.
And, and they have worked very diligently to try to make this project work. But I can't speak on their behalf.
Right.
Yeah.
If I can just interject, that's what the planning process, the planning board is for, to tell us, to make their recommendation to us that this is a good fit or not. Or they go back to the applicant and say, this is not a good fit. You need to modify. I think we need to wait for the planning board to do their work, and then they'll bring back their findings to us. And then we can say, we like it or we don't. But the planning board is there for a reason. There are, there's a great deal of expertise there that we don't have. If the project is not right, they will address that. And if they don't, if they think it's wonderful, and it comes to us, we then have the opportunity to say, we don't like this. But we really need to let the planning board do their work. And, and anyone who's concerned about this project, the planning board is meeting tomorrow night, and they're addressing this issue. You should go, you should come right here. Again, tomorrow night, there's a community comment portion of their agenda as well. Bring all of your concerns to them. Make sure they, they will address them. They will address the concerns as the process moves forward. I have faith in the planning board, and I have faith in the institutions of this town. And I'd like to see this work its way through.
Just one point of clarification. We talked about it briefly in the work session. This is probably not coming back to us in a form that we're going to approve. This is between the planning and zoning. Although there is some-
The only thing that would be coming to you is a proposed memo of understanding with regard to a potential lease, if the project's given the go-ahead. But it would be planning and zoning that would be making those decisions. They can't do it without their input and relief.
So I, I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Kelso. But I do think this conversation has been helpful, because from what I've gotten from the community is that there's not a real good understanding, you know, and I don't have it myself. So I can only imagine how others are feeling about the process, and how this is going to work out. And I think a lot of the emails we've gotten have been, people panicked that this is moving forward regardless of what happens. So I think the fact that we're having this discussion is helpful and informative as far as getting, getting the process out there. So, you know, I would also encourage people to attend the planning meeting and get, get your opinions on, on record there. It's important to do.
I also think people are confused about the town's jurisdictions here, over the fire districts and the EMS. So I think it's helpful that we're having this conversation to let residents know EMS is a town-provided service. The fire districts are independent, and they tax independently. You get a tax bill from the, from the fire districts. And they, they govern themselves. They own their own properties. I know the forest fire is a lease, but they, they govern and manage their own service. The town doesn't manage Union Fire District or Kingston Fire District. But the town does manage EMS. And I think there's, people don't understand the, the separation here. It's a, it's a unique situation.
But we did have a role as the town setting forth this project at that location. So that is where I'm at. So we may not have control of whether the planning board tweaks or adjusts something, or the zoning board, both. However, we are, we are here, and I am grateful that, that community members are writing to us so that this brings this topic up again, so that you can understand that the community doesn't like what was decided, that they don't like that location. So I will never not want someone to come and say, please rethink this. And that's what they're asking. To me, they want us to vet better solutions. Push for Craig to have the EMS he needs, but to really exhaust every other option. And we didn't advertise. We didn't. And that happened, that meeting that we decided that was one of the last ones we had on Zoom. And I'm, I'm hearing from many in the community that they want us to take another look at planning that project there. I don't want to hold up Union Fire from doing what they want to do to their station. But I do hear people in our community, and I, and they live here. They're our residents, whether they're, they're longtime residents, they lived here two years ago, or they're summer people. They care about what it is. We need to make sure that the project that we decided is in the right location for our community and for Craig. So I thank the Schwabs who are not here. They spoke to me last week. And I want to hear from the community as well, if they're here.
Any other questions for the chief?
Mike, I just got a few questions for you. Clarification. So this is going to go through the planning board. Then they also need additional things from the zoning board review. But nothing can take place until they get authorization from us as to execution of the agreement, which would be after planning board, after zoning board review?
Assuming that they receive the approvals of those boards to go forward, they would need then to come back to you to enter into a memorandum of agreement in terms of how this project's going to be paid for. That's really what it's all about. The town would be basically paying the cost of the project over a period of time. That can't be done. That project can't happen without this memorandum of agreement in place. Otherwise, there'd be no way to finance it.
So nothing can occur unless we authorize execution of the agreement, which would take place subsequent to those respective board meetings?
Basically correct. Because they don't have the money to do it without you approving the MOU.
Understood.
But at that point, the project will, will be so far down the road, we won't be able to change it. And I would like to say that we, we, the vote was to approve spending $100,000 a year for 10 years to lease it. So that we decided that we could commit $1 million towards it. So maybe we could find a piece of land, knowing that we've already committed to spending $1 million in 10 years. And honestly, at the end of 10 years, we don't know what the rent will be from the district again. We don't, we're going to be in that arrangement again. Whereas we could look potentially to commit money now to buy a permanent location that meets the needs of the community, the residents, and Craig. That's, that's, that's all I've kind of gotten to at this point. And it doesn't feel, go there, they're going to disrupt the entire thing.
I see that Terry has something she wants to-
Just a, a point of clarification. On the memorandum of agreement, if the town were to lease, that is a finite number. That is not to say that there will be additional, the town will not be renting. The town will own that EMS structure at that point, and be responsible for capital improvements to it. But there will not be additional rent continuing to be paid to the UFD. The intention of the 10-year lease is to cover the cost of the design and construction of the EMS building. It is not to be continued beyond that point, and then the town would be the owner of that building and would be responsible for maintaining and investing capital to keep the infrastructure up. But that, that's the only clarification I wanted to-
In researching land and speaking with the finance director, with the cost of the station around $1 million to $1.5 million, and land could be run us, you know, $1 million to $2 million, that that would be a bond referendum most likely for that amount of money.
You only need an acre?
No, sorry, what, ma'am?
You only need an acre? And it's $1 million?
Well, the land, I don't know what's land is, or how much that would be, commercial property along Route 1.
Right. It is, it is important to think about the counterfactual in general in these discussions. So this is sort of a classic NIMBY argument, not in my backyard. There's, you know, a big public benefit to having reduced service times for EMS. We've heard that from many community members in the past as well, so we need to weigh that. We also need to think, you know, any other location where we might put an EMS station, all the neighbors around there are also going to be upset about having fast-moving vehicles, sirens, what have you. So it's not a, I don't think we can totally get rid of that part of the problem by finding another location necessarily. It would have to be just a very, I mean, perfect situation to, to find that. I think that's something to think about as we're looking at this. All right. Any final questions for the chief? Any final questions for the chief? We can let one of the communicants come up. All right, thank you, chief. All right, so the Mundies are here? Am I pronouncing that name horribly wrong? Mundie, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and to the chiefs. I don't want to, you know, we're not, not in support of improving response rates. And I want to thank the council members that responded to me today and educated me in, in some ways. So I hope I don't say some things wrong because we do want to help. We do want you to continue to improve the response times and, and lives do matter. But as you said, you know, to what the Schwabs have said, there's, you know, too much development for a small space, too much, too many waivers are needed for, you know, unreasonable for what other taxpayers or businesses might get away with, unjustful, unjustifiable negative impacts on the direct abutters and neighbors and safety issues. You know, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road has no sidewalks, very little shoulders, and there's a ton of pedestrians on that street. Bicyclists, walkers, joggers, families. So I'm not going to dwell on that. All that's on, on the record and I'm not going to take up a lot of your time because I understand, Mrs. Kelso, where, you know, what tomorrow is for, really for today. I really didn't even know what today was, other than the council meeting. So all I really want to say is, I think you have some concerned neighbors, concerned residents that I for one would help you. If you haven't, not that I'm some super duper, somebody that can get something done, but I mean, if, if you haven't advertised, if you haven't asked the community, if, you know, a lot of people are blaming the land trust, but nobody understands the details that went on with the land trust. You know, the US government has given up property to take care of things like this in other towns, other states. You know, some people have said, why isn't this being looked at in the middle of Route One? Well, it's not, it's not, that's not normal. Why do they, why do we have to wait for the, why do we have to wait for the buildings, living quarters to get the ambulances to improve this response rate? Can't we make some type of accommodations to save the lives and improve the response rate until the right place is found? I mean, two ambulances, I understand it takes approval. You know, there's other alternatives. You know, I said this in my email, but I'm, I'm challenged every day at my job to think outside the box and, and save our customers' money as well as make more money for my company. So by doing that, that's looking at what you've done all the time, how things work, and then trying to find a better way to get it done in the long run. So, you know, very different year, the pandemic has proved it. I think a few years back, wasn't there something where fire departments had a different challenge, where people were dumping babies and put a whole different thing? You know, I don't say that to be gross, but where they had to turn them into safe houses. So life, population, the future is going to put new demands on something we haven't even considered. So let's make sure this space can handle it. You know, down the road, you're going to want two ambulances. Can it handle it? Let's make sure this is in the right spot. If we can help you canvas businesses, help you get a donation, help you put an advertisement out, I'm sure you've got a concerned enough community that would help you do it. It's not a matter of not in my backyard. It's a matter of is it the right place at the right time? So thank you very much for your time. Anything else? Come on, you're dying. Councilman McAteer, I'm kidding. You've got something to say. Come on.
I appreciate what you said. I think it's very articulate. I think it gets the point across good. I think you represent the community well in your area with what you just said there. And we appreciate your thoughts a lot, we do.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do I hear a motion on? No, this is not an open, I mean, please come up at comments from interested citizens sometimes if you'd like to address this matter further. But do I hear a motion on item?
Make the motion to place item 7M on file.
Second. So moved. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously and that does bring us to item nine, comments from interested citizens. So, Dave.
Dave Cote, Wakefield, fire chief, town council. This is new to me, hearing this tonight. I don't know if it's been around for a while, but I guess the planning board hasn't said anything yet. But my, my question, and I guess this is for tomorrow night, is like, where, where, you know, do we have the quantitative data? And the quantitative data is the response time, what's the response time today? What's the response time if you move it? What's the response time? What's, what's the standard throughout the state? What, what's a, what's a reasonable response time? So if, if today it takes five minutes, is that, how does that compare, compare state, statewide? So that would be my question. And the 179 cardiac arrests, was that for a year or a month or?
30.
So that, that was for, that's, that was for a year, so 30. So I'm trying to, and is this for, my understanding it's, it's less than an acre at the site? So the site is really small. I, I myself, you were talking, and I don't think it's, as you said, it's not in my backyard, it's in everybody's backyard. I cycle around there, all my friends cycle around there. I've purposely tried to stay off Route One and, because I, I cycle pretty far, so staying in that area, it's, it's safe. But now if, you know, EMS is going out more, fire department's going out, so, so that's my concern. So tomorrow, will we have all this quantitative data?
So just a reminder to everyone that comments from interested citizens is an opportunity for community members to come up, share their opinions, thoughts. If you have a question, you can ask it. We're not, it's not a public hearing where we give answers to questions. I would just say, I think you will hear answers to those questions at the planning board tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
My name's David Styler. My wife Carol and I live at 205 Osprey Road and we moved there about, excuse me, 18 months I'm here tonight just talk, I want to talk about transparency a little bit, which is very important to us, certainly. We're coming late to the dance. Not because we didn't want to, but because we weren't invited. We got an invitation before the last planning board meeting, maybe a week or two before, and only a few of us, the abutters, were actually notified of the meeting. We had, we had no idea that this was going on at all. When we went to the meeting, one of the things that I found out was it was the fourth meeting about the firehouse and EMS location. And we didn't have a chance to really give community input. And, you know, we're not rebels, we're not going to get up and yell and scream. We want to work with people and, and solve problems. I'm a former school administrator and 30 years. One of the things that I always saw and always believed in, when we proposed a new building, a new gym, a new track, whatever, we always had public input early on so that the public got a sense of planning with us and not against us. You know, we didn't wait till the last second to show them the plans and for them to be sitting there scratching their heads. So I think our big concern is the location. We live catty corner to the firehouse. The firemen have been great for us, okay? You know, we have some lights and we have some calls once in a while. But shoehorning in an EMS service, have, have, has everybody been to the site? Okay. So you know what I mean? When you're facing the building to the left on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road is that rise 25 yards away. I just spoke to the bicycle committee about this because, just inform them, you know, cars fly over that. If, if an ambulance is pulling out, you're, you know, inviting disaster. And the other thing is there's no shoulders. I bike along Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road all the time. As David said, there's dog walkers, walkers, joggers and bicyclists. There's no shoulders and the road is windy, so if you put an EMS vehicle on there going, you know, 45, 50 miles an hour, okay, unsuspecting pedestrians, it's a real risk. So that is our major concern here. We would love to have an alternate site investigated. If the firehouse is going to be built there, that, that, you know, we're not going to argue with that. But the EM, you know, putting an EMS building on that site, we don't think is conducive to good safety and good service. And by the way, you know, I'm in the elderly population, all right? We, we want an EMS in the area, okay? I'm getting older, I'm, I am old, I'm not getting older. And people that live adjacent to us are older. We all want an EMS service, but we want it placed appropriately that's good for the community and safe as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary Chapman. I, I just come before you because as you know, how important EMS is to our town. It's, it's, we came before you, a group of people, a couple of years ago during budget, to make sure that we got funding for 24 hours at, at, at the Route One police station so that we could handle Mattoonik around the clock. It's one of the most important services that the town offers. You, the state police chief or the head of the state, Rhode Island State Police was here a few weeks ago. He told you how important, he felt the EMS service was to this town. It is important. Location's important, okay? You know, in Mattoonik, most of the land is owned by the land trust. The land trust, the land trust, the group that has come before you many, many times in the past, asking the town of South Kingstown for money to purchase land. And did we ever turn them down? I don't think we ever did, if it made sense. I mean, so the, the point that I'm trying to make is, it's, it's, if the land trust doesn't want to give up any land, I'm sure, and they probably have restrictions. But they've come to us, we've helped them out. Maybe you need to meet with the land trust. Maybe you, the town council, needs to request a meeting with the land trust and say, what can we do to do this, to make this happen? There are, I'm sure there's restrictions on some of the property, the nature conservancy, the US government, but you have a solicitor that can work with them, they have an attorney that can work with them. Why, why can't we proceed with, with that and see what happens? Do you realize the, I went online, the tax database of our town. Do you know how much we abate in taxes for the land trust every year? Anybody up there? $400,000 a year. $400,000 a year in taxes. Not just this year, every year. I think they, they can at least come to the table with us and have a discussion. Thank you.
Roberta Mulholland, 161 Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. First, are we going to be allowed public comment on any of the new business items? Yes?
I don't believe.
Rather than go through everything here when other people might want to make general comments. We used to be able to make comments on new business items and then a couple of years ago, that stopped. So I want to ask that question in case there are people here that want to talk about the chicken ordinance or something. So are we going to have opportunity to talk about those when they come up on the agenda?
It'll be at the discretion of the council.
Can you tell us now, yes or no, so people don't stay seated?
For the whole council and, you know, if you have something to say that you really need to say about the new business items, I would just recommend doing it now.
Okay. So anyone who wants to speak about the chicken ordinance should speak now or about your rules of conduct should speak now. Okay. First, on the Mattoonik fire station and putting the EMS there, until you are waiting for an ambulance on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road for your elderly parent and it doesn't come, and finally, the ambulance comes and it's Charlestown Volunteer Ambulance, I don't think you can understand what waiting 20, 25 minutes means. With respect to the lot, it abuts the land trust. I agree with Gary. This town council should be asking the land trust for that land. $400,000 a year, they don't pay in taxes that we all subsidize. They could donate, not swap, donate a piece of land. If it has restrictions, you can get the restrictions lifted. I've been involved in those transactions. The land trust knows who to go to and get those restrictions modified to allow a public safety building. So I really ask you to do that. If there's not enough room there, it abuts the land trust, let's get some more land from the land trust and ask them. And they come every year to you for a pilot, right? They have that great clubhouse, they have those new offices, those beautiful buildings. They don't pay all their taxes. I think you have to ask them and put a little pressure on them. The people in that end of town deserve to have an ambulance there. On your rules of conduct, I'd like you to refer to Rule 10, speaking by the public. It does say, there's a public comment period, five minutes, and at other times when invited to do so by the president. The public shall address their comments to the question under debate as indicated on the agenda. That happened for decades and it stopped under ABLE. I would like the town council, when you're talking about your rules, please, please consider that people come here to speak about an agenda item and miss it. It always was, the president would say, this is the new business item, it was explained, the council would discuss it, and then, does anyone want to speak on that? And people would speak and actually give important information. So please consider that. On the chicken ordinance or the fowl ordinance, I read Mike's memo. I don't think we really should be looking to narrate it. Narrate and South Kingstown are not alike. Look at Richmond. Richmond is a town with some subdivisions, some development, some commercial and also working farms. We have working farms, but we also have a lot of chickens and turkeys in very congested areas. Richmond has an ordinance that forbids animals at large. Animals include all the fowl. Richmond went to the state legislature and got two enacted, two statutes amended to give them the authority to create that ordinance. One is 413-1B12 and the other's 415-7B. Their ordinance defines at-large as off your own property, off a leash, out of your control, not kept on your property. That's what we have. We have fowl that are at large. They also have the ability to fine the owners of the property. They are authorized by state statute to have the animal control officer take possession of that fowl that's on someone else's property, take it back to the dog pound, call that owner, find out who it belongs to, they can pick it up, they pay a fine. Their first time starts at $25. Give the first time a warning. Their second time 50 and then their third, I'm sorry, first time 50, second 75, third 100. Make these people pay. You cannot legislate good neighborly behavior. You can't do it. You can't legislate morality or ethics. You can punish people for being bad neighbors and allowing what's happened in this town. I'm really shocked at how many people, after that woman spoke, I'm shocked at how many people are having to put up with these nasty roosters and a flock of turkeys. Get the enabling authorization. The town can do it. Make the ACO authorized to take care of that and help people rather than citing for trespass, blah, blah, blah. Grab them, take them, fine them. If they don't pick them up, sell them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is this open for, can I speak?
Please.
Okay, I mean, I don't want to jump. I don't like to be jumping in here quick. Somebody else wants to speak, it's all right with me too. Anyway, Bob Traeger, Sakatah Road. Lived in Rhode Island all my life. Spent time in military service. Went to Rhode Island College, got a master's degree, thirty hours behind my master's, doesn't mean much, I'll be honest with you. I'm eighty-one years old. I'm a speck of dust in this world, less than a speck of dust. And I hate to say it, but we all are, just a speck of dust. But you guys, as I've said before, addressing this group, is, I highly respect anybody that is willing to put themselves in the front of the public and have to agonize over decisions that are sometimes very difficult to even listen to. But I, I don't get up here usually to talk about exactly what goes on in the town itself. My day, my day is very, very much the same, to a certain extent, certain parts of my day. I usually get up about six. I, sometimes I'll listen to Christiane Amanpour and then I'll put on Washington Journal for about a half an hour or an hour, and then I go out and I do what I think I got to do. That's usually how it goes in the morning. I used to watch the NewsHour every night, PBS. I don't watch MSNBC, I don't watch Fox. Once in a while, I'll, I'll give Cuomo a chance on CNN. But anyway, I don't have a great memory. I'm a dyslexic. I never know what I'm going to say when I get up here, exactly. I can't do what that previous speaker does, you know, she had it kind of lined up, she knew what she wanted to say. I'm never a hundred percent sure about what I want to say. I know what I want to talk about a little bit, and I know I probably don't have enough time to talk, there's a million, I don't, okay, I don't want to exaggerate, hundreds of thousands of issues that are going on in this country right now that should demand all of our attention. But there's one, there's one. I mean, I, I watched PBS in the beginning, the first couple of seconds of it, they showed a baby starving, many, several babies dying in Afghanistan of starvation. I mean, what you, what you can see every day about the world is enough to make any grown person shrink in horror. And I do, and I, I watched, I have, I try to catch, on Sunday, I try to catch Meet the Press, if I can, and I listened to it this week, and the, for the whole time, I said, what is going on here? Anyway, that's not it. Voting, voting is what I'm thinking about most of all. Over all of the other things that are going on, this country, I believe, at this particular moment, is in the most critical situation that I've ever, ever would have dreamed it would be in. When we have government legislatures around this country, quite a few, and like I say, I don't, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not the Jeopardy person that has, has all of this stuff recorded down and every name, I mean, you can talk about the Florida and Texas, that's the main ones they highlight, but it's, it's not only Florida and Texas. Voting, now, a lot of the conversation about voting, I'll try to make this brief, it's going to be brief. A lot of the conversation about voting on these programs where they have supposedly, and I believe they are, very intelligent people, lots of times, they get in, they get off on the restrictions of voting, oh, they're going to do this, it's going to restrict somebody from getting to the voting booth and whatever. Well, so we've already got tons of that in this country already. But that is one of the things that's going on. But that is not the one. Or it isn't, there are several others, and I can't document them like somebody else might be able to get up from this audience right here and do it right now. They could probably document it for us. But there are legislations and these, these administrations in this country that have, have been elected by the people, that's what we want to do, democracy, vote the people, and then they rep, you're doing it. You're doing it. And I happen to be lucky to be living in Rhode Island, you know, and anywhere in New England for that matter. But when, when they start making rules and regulations that say that after an election, oh, well, we can, oh, no, we can just deny it. Have you thought about it? I mean, I mean, think about this. We're, we're here in Rhode Island.
Bob, can I?
Okay, I've done more than five, yeah, okay. Anyway, if you're not thinking about it every day, voting, and what's going on in this country, and not thinking about a way that we can do something about it, we could be all losers.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Martha Stamp, and hell, I've been around a lot longer than you because I'm eighty-four. And I tell you what, I've been a resident of Rhode Island all my life, but I've been down here for forty wonderful years. And what I have seen sometimes is almost unbelievable. First, I have two things on my mind tonight. One, I want to just mention Nicole Solis. I had no idea that this lovely lady was ever going to be a resident of South Kingstown and her husband and her two children. People would come to me and say, Martha, do you know Nicole? I said, who's that? Well, you better get to know Martha, and she did. And what I saw here a few weeks ago, when this wonderful lady, Nicole Solis, only wanted to know what her little one was going to have on her curriculum, that was the most disturbing thing, outside of me having leukemia and breast cancer, and I'm a survivor of forty years down here. And I think that it really needs an apology. Anybody who has ever been escorted from here, ABEL, by the police department is a complete disaster to this town. And I think you certainly should have an apology to Nicole Solis. She has done more for what we have known for the last two or three years after this year because we've gathered more and more information. We want our children, if we're going to be spending twenty-five thousand or twenty-six thousand per child, to be educated here. That brings me to another point, that a memorandum of, of, of whatever it was that she mentioned down here, school, schoolchildren of non-residents here, this is only opening up the floodgates. So somebody said to me the other night, well, one or two, it doesn't matter, yeah, well, I've been here for forty years in this town, and once that happens, because it was signed on June twenty-eighth by Stavastano and some BOZ, I don't know how to, on June twenty-eighth because I, I saw it. So keep that in mind because I might be gone by the time it happens, but you're going to get, you're going to have thousands that want to come down here in our school system. Let's try and keep our parents here and teach the kids so that they can make a living and pay taxes here. That would be, then the rest will take care of itself. Seems like in nineteen sixty-four, we passed a law that we shouldn't segregate. And we haven't. Now we're going back? I mean, am I right or wrong? Okay. I think that's all I have to say, but I think a lot of people do know who I am. You're all right, Mr. Verger.
Thank you.
Martha's a tough act to follow, but she was friends with my grandma, so it's okay. Jessica Mayhew, I live over on Prizing Ave. A lot of people follow my posts on Facebook. I love that, it's kind of awesome. I'm going to talk to you about my chickens again. Here I am, you're talking about my birds, and let me tell you, I love them dearly, and so is my little four-year-old. I mean, he just got third-place showmanship at the state poultry meet. So, and we're actually gearing up, November second, we actually got permission from the guild to have our first 4-H club, our first, like, South Kingstown Small Animal Club. And here you guys, yes, it's super, super exciting because it's not just for chickens, it's for chickens, rabbits, community service. I had a parent reach out who does dogs, so it's going to be great. And then I see on Facebook that poultry is being discussed again, and I'm like, oh, please don't do this to me. I have a lot of very excited small children, as in, over seventy parents actually responded to this. So this is going to be really great for the community. Please don't model it after an arrogant it, do what works for here. One of the biggest things I plan on, like, teaching the kids is how to safely, like, contain your birds. My birds, I spend way too much money on. I can tell you all about it at a different time, but I probably spent close to, like, two to three hundred dollars on showbirds this year. I'm not letting them wander around. We have way too many things that can eat them, including my neighbor's cat that wanders, but I'm not going to complain about that because it's called being an adult. And you walk to your neighbor's house and say, oh, hey, by the way, keep your cat in your yard, whatever. Please leave my birds alone. And I read the email that was listed, that wasn't discussed, I would love to do education. If you guys want to form some, like, ag education board, please, my degree is in agricultural education, I'm a stay-at-home mom, I would love to do that. Because if we're going to do the backyard poultry thing, if we're going to do the backyard rabbit thing, we need to have the education behind it. It's not taught in our schools, but it is very trendy right now. And that's great. I love it. I want to see people with animals, but I also want to see the animals treated well, and I want to see people doing it safely. So please, like, have farmers on your board, please. I will tell you all about how to be safe with your birds. You want to learn how to raise them from chick to adult? I got you covered. You want to learn about safe processing? I can do that, too. But please, 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 don't do anything that's going to hinder the fact that there's going to be at least thirty to forty kids who are finding something outside of school that's going to be good for them, that's going to keep them off the streets, that's going to have them doing community service projects. Please, just think, think very, very carefully. Ask questions. I will totally answer any single chicken question you have for me. You want information for the state vet? I can give you his first name, he's known me since I was a child. Literally, anything involving agriculture, just ask, just ask. I just don't want to see the agricultural heritage of the town change simply because someone's moving here from, I don't know, somewhere else, because we are pretty fortunate, our area is pretty wonderful, but just because you moved from somewhere else, please don't change here. That's all. Yeah. I'm free, you can email me, please, please.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Hogan. I serve as the district solicitor for the Union Fire District, and I've been in that position since nineteen ninety-four. Pardon me. I just wanted to come up and comment after listening to the council's comments this evening, as well as members of the public. And I have a few points to make. The first is, I have a very uneasy feeling coming from this council. My Board of Wardens and my fire chief have worked very, very hard over any number of months, both since the council agreed to move forward and prior to. We've worked in collaboration with your EMS department and proceeded on the basis that this is what the town wanted and that we were being good partners for public safety. If my clients were to ask me tonight, which I'm sure they will, because they're here, is that, is this going to garner the town council's support? I would tell them no, based on what I'm hearing tonight. I totally understand neighbors, when they are aware of something, how they can, their concerns can come to the forefront, and that may impact your, your, your commentary. But I do take issue with the gentleman who spoke to the lack of transparency. The Union Fire District is a public body, just like yourselves, and we did not miss a meeting during COVID. The gentleman who's the chair of that board is the most technologically inept individual, sorry, Tony, that you will ever meet. However, he pivoted immediately into the online format and didn't miss a beat. This project has been discussed in the public realm for well over two years. So for members of the public to say they didn't know anything about it, it's because they're not availing themselves of the public process and listening into meetings and/or reading minutes, et cetera. Same as that you would probably say if somebody came to you and said, well, how come I didn't know anything about it? And you're, and you would say, we've been talking about this for over a year, how could you not know about it? So I, I do struggle with that, and I would ask you to keep that in mind. The other concern that I have is, if the town is looking to ditch the project, we'd appreciate knowing that. We've spent a lot of time and a lot of money on the basis of the agreement with the town that, that we were moving forward together on this project. But what we don't also want to have happen is for our project to go down the tubes because the town has cold feet. So tomorrow evening, we will proceed before the planning board, and if the time comes where we have to scuttle the town's project in order to get approval for the fire department, that's something we're going to have to talk about. This is not a comfortable place for any of us to be, and it's really very disturbing. So I wanted you to know that, and I want you to know that we're going to proceed. We certainly hope the town is still a partner. My chief has worked, I can't tell you how, how many hours, and the town had determined that it was in its best interest, and now it's clear that the town is very much opposed to proceeding. At least two, for sure, and it looked like more. So that's a disturbing position for us to be in, and we would like to proceed with our project. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Ladari. I have a few observations I'd like to make about the Mattoonik issue. Bearing in mind the statement that was just made by Chief Stanley, that the ideal location is Mattoonik Beach Road at Route One. I'd like to call your attention to this article from the Valley Breeze, which is a newspaper in the north, northern part of the state. It discusses the issue of a new fire station in Smithfield. This is about a year old, and the chief is Robert Seltzer, and he's interviewed about three or four different locations that are available in Smithfield to build a station. And he makes a statement that I think is very important for us to bear in mind tonight. His statement is, "The last thing we want is to put the station in the wrong location." I also have an email response here from the administrator of the fire district, John Blessing, which dates back to June. I emailed him asking several questions about the, this project. Number one was, what is the cost of raising the existing station? And his reply is, he did not know because it has to go out to bed at the appropriate What is the cost of the new station? The same answer. Three, how long will, will there be no operating fire station in Mattoonik? We anticipate that the station will be closed for six to eight months. Now, that is a factor that hasn't been discussed yet tonight. That means- Now that is a factor that hasn't been discussed yet tonight. That means there will be no fire truck in Mattoonik for six to eight months, unless, and I'm not being sarcastic, unless a heated garage with a 12-foot overhead door is available, which I doubt very much there is. Finally, I asked about any negotiation with the land trust as a possible location for the station. His reply was, "The UFD did investigate vacant land parcels in Mattoonik, as well as in discussion with the land trust, for over two and a half years regarding a potential land swap. The UFD was notified by the land trust that the state of Rhode Island was not supportive of the proposed land swap between UFD and SKLT." Now, I don't really know what jurisdiction the state of Rhode Island has over this, but it just boggles my mind that any government agency could possibly consider a few thousand square feet of grass and corn stalks more important than locating a fire and EMS station on that property, which will affect the lives of people in this town every single day, the health, safety, and welfare of people in this town every single day. My next issue is, there have been mentioned, people before me have mentioned other situations where governments have given up property to a municipality for a fire station. I'd like to tell you, I'm retired from the Narragansett Fire Department. In the late '70s, we needed a new fire station in the south end of Narragansett, and the most suitable location was where the station is today. It's on Point Judith Road, just south of the intersection where St. Mary's Church is. That land was owned by the United States Army. With the help of Senator Chafee, Senator Pell, and Congressman Tierney, the town of Narragansett acquired the land where the station sits today. So my question is, if the town in Narragansett can get land from the United States Army, why can't the town of South Kingstown get an acre of land, or whatever it is, as I say, a few thousand square feet of grass and corn stalks, to build a fire and EMS station at the ideal location that Chief Stanley mentioned, Mattoonik Beach Road and US-1? One final thing, in my opinion, in order for this move of the EMS unit from where it is, which is, by the way, a terrible location, because it's skewered way off to the side of the town, it's not centrally located east to west, it's way, it's almost on the Narragansett town line, it's a terrible location. Furthermore, it's a terrible location to put a building which houses emergency apparatus on a four-lane divided highway, because they're pulling out into 60 mile-an-hour traffic, and it's very dangerous. The ideal location is Mattoonik Beach Road, and what is critical to this being effective, this unit being effective for South Kingstown, is the ability to jump, to get a call and to jump right onto Route 1 to go to Snug Harbor, because that's also a southern, a community in the southern part of the town, south of Route 1. The location of Mattoonik Beach Road and US-1 is 1.3 miles away from the fork in the road, the heart of the Snug Harbor neighborhood, where Gooseberry goes to the left and Succotash goes to the right. This location is only 1.3 miles from that. Furthermore, this truck will also be responding often into the population center of the town, Wakefield and Peastale. If it jumps right on Route 1, it's going to have four exits off Route 1 to get to, conveniently and quickly, get to any location in Wakefield and Peastale. And if this station is hidden on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, hidden behind a fire station on a residential street in a residential community, it is not going to jump onto Route 1. It's gonna take a long time to get to Route 1. It's gonna intermingle with Mattoonik Elementary School traffic every day.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment tonight? If not, any comments up at the council table? Very good. That brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
Before I speak to some items on my report, I would like just to clarify or share information with regard to the UFD-town partnership with this project that's being considered at the planning board level. And one of the pieces of information that the council should be aware of is that there has been a conversation with the land trust since the last planning board meeting with town staff, and I'm trying to remember if we had a UFD representative there, to actually seek out, to find out if the land trust did have available properties that did not have restrictions or easements, to see if there was, were some options there. We also discussed an easement and/or a possible land swap on the property adjacent to, the land trust property adjacent to the UFD fire property. And the land, we spoke with Julia Landstreet. She was very, you know, listened, and she did have her staff reach out. They're legal. We were told that there was not an opportunity to bump out onto that piece of land trust property adjacent to the Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road Fire District station. So there have been discussions with the land trust to seek potential options in that regard. I think that that will likely come up again tomorrow evening. I just didn't want the council to think that the land trust is ignoring the town. In fact, as I said, we have met with the land trust to try to see what might be available, what properties could be out there. And as the chief mentioned, there's not many, but, you know, the town has had that conversation. The UFD, I think they had mentioned that they've also spoken with the land trust. So the dialogue is happening, and it's ongoing, but I wanted the council to be aware that there was discussion with the land trust.
Thank you. Was that the whole manager's report?
No.
You want questions?
Just, it has been said by someone in the public that the land trust does have a pilot agreement. Is that amount accurate? Is it $400,000 in that?
I don't, I would have to check with the Assesha's office on the exact number on the pilot agreement with the land trust.
Okay.
I can get back to you with that.
Thank you.
Information.
Just a couple of items. Item H on the Town Manager's Report is a letter from the Conservation Commission Chair with regard to the plastic reduction ordinance. And as a follow-up, this was related to specifically Shaw's Market not using paper bags since the ordinance was put back into effect. Within the last two weeks, they have transitions over to paper bags again, and that's via a direct conversation with the manager of the market. So just so the council's aware of that. You also received a memo that you had requested with regard to the enabling legislation that would allow for a property tax credit for residents 60 and over. I did provide a memo to that effect, and, you know, if the council has any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Terry, can you just give a broad overview of what the memo entails?
Sure. So the enabling legislation would basically allow cities and towns to enact an ordinance or a resolution that would allow for property tax credits up to $1,500 to any property owner 60, age 60 or over, who could, who would perform volunteer hours for the town. Basically, the volunteer hours would be the equivalent of a minimum wage value. The law also requires that the towns and municipalities would be responsible for maintaining all the records of participants. There would be other local criteria that could be layered into any ordinance or resolution if the town were to consider this. The credit that's earned, if someone were to volunteer, it's not considered income, wages, or employment for the purposes of taxation or workers' compensation. However, it is for the purpose of unemployment insurance. I have queried the inter-local trust in terms of what the risk might be with regard to that particular clause in the legislation, and I have heard back from the trust that there, the language is somewhat vague, and there needs to be clarification on that before they would recommend that the town kind of go down this road to establish any type of ordinance. The other piece of this legislation does allow for a volunteer to stand in as proxy for a property owner who is 60 or over and may not be physically able to volunteer. Currently, the only municipality that we are aware of that has a program in place which predates this enabling legislation is the city of Newport, and they max theirs at $500. In doing some assumptions with regard to demographics and the tax base for property owners 60 and older, I basically provided you with some assumptions that would say that, let's say, there are 4,000 property owners that are 60 and older. Even if we were to cut that in half, let's assume 50% of them were eligible to receive a maximum credit allowable under the legislation, which is $1,500, that would be an impact of just over $350,000 in terms of a tax revenue decline. In other words, if we were to even be able to do that, which would be a significant number of volunteer hours to provide, that's what the revenue decrease would be on the tax side. Other points that you may want to consider is, a program like this will require administrative time for a staff person to actually put this into place. If a resident 60 or over who pays taxes is interested in volunteering, they essentially apply as if they were a town employee. They'd have to go through a background check. There would have to be certain mechanisms in place, similar to regular HR kind of policies, in order to ensure that the town isn't exposed to any type of risk. I would also say that the likelihood that people between the age of 60 and 67, many are still working at that age, and probably wouldn't be the interested parties. I think you'd see older retirees that would be interested. Again, depending on the level of interest, it's possible that the interest level in volunteering may exceed the actual volunteer opportunities that would be available within the town. This is not something where the town can say, okay, there's community organizations that you could volunteer at. That is not what this is. This is strictly for town business. It could be at the town hall, it could be at the senior center, but it could not be where we would place someone outside of a town function, like a nonprofit agency within the town. Other town departments already offer volunteer opportunities to students. We have students at the high school who need National Honor Society hours. We have senior citizens who volunteer regularly that don't live in their own homes and want volunteer opportunities. So there could be some competition for whatever volunteer hours there may be, and we certainly scout, scouting organizations, those types of groups that also volunteer within the The other point is that there could be possible implications related to our collective bargaining units, and being certain that we do not identify opportunities that could be construed as taking a job away from, or a job opportunity away, basically. And so I basically laid out scenarios for you. Again, it's very difficult to determine what level of interest there would be in a program like this. I will tell you that in speaking with a couple of other municipalities, there is a hesitancy because of some of the vagueness within the language of the legislation that's keeping towns from really establishing something right away. If the council were to consider a program, I would be err on the side of caution and start with probably a lower amount than a $1,500 maximum credit. You may want, you would want to consider possibly increasing the age, not starting at 60, maybe starting at 65. Requiring property taxpayers to be owners and year-round residents, not have a property owner who winters in another state have an opportunity for this. And a stipulation that there's a finite number of volunteer opportunity hours available, that at some point, there's gotta be some, you know, limit to the number of hours that can be afforded. And anyone who is volunteering for the town, similar to the school department and the rec. department, they would require a background check on volunteers who are working within town facilities, having access to potentially town offices. So I think there's a little bit of further refinement necessary, and some more information that would be helpful before the council makes a decision on whether to consider going down this route with an ordinance, particularly on the legal side of the unemployment issue, and what opportunities would, how you would want to limit the program, because there's gotta be some constraints put on it in order to test the waters, per se, if that were necessary. The other thing is, South Kingstown already has an elderly tax credit program and veterans' exemption. It could be that the same individuals would benefit from a program like this. So is there a consideration to be given to establishing only for low-mod income residents over the age of 60? Or perhaps it might make sense to revisit the elderly abatement program to see if you're really targeting the people who need it most, who are presumably elderly residents trying to stay in their own home, to take a look at that a little more closely and see if maybe the elderly tax abatement program is worth tweaking or amending. But the spirit of the legislation is very good. I think there's certainly a benefit to the idea of having residents who have worked all their lives and have skills and abilities to assist the town. I do think, though, there needs to be a little more information with regard to the risk and the legal implications of implementing this type of program.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Is that for the Town Manager's Report?
Oh, I just have another memo relative to a request from Councilwoman Bergner regarding the ordinances and policy documents as related to the town purchasing procedures and the checks and balances in place for procurement. I do have a memo also within the report. If there are any questions, I'm happy to address them at this time.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you. That brings us to the Town Solicitors' Report.
Okay, I have several items to discuss with you this evening. We'll begin with the Rhode Island State Police report in connection with the AFL-CIO mailer. I provided you with a memo this evening, that of course is public, but just in summary, here's what it basically says, that I was contacted by a detective from the Rhode Island State that I was contacted by a detective from the Rhode Island State Police. His name was Adam Houston. Had a very, very short conversation with him. Basically consisted of him asking me whether or not the report that I had, the investigation I had conducted and the report that I produced on behalf of the council, if the statements and conclusions were basically true, that I stood behind what I said in the report. Counsel stood behind it and I advised him, yes. He also asked me about whether or not I believed any criminal charges were appropriate in the case. I told him that we reviewed it very thoroughly in my office. Several of us have prosecuted for many years and that, in our opinion, although what the superintendent did may have crossed the line in terms of policy, in terms of bad judgment, et cetera, that, in my opinion, no criminal statute was violated. That was basically the end of the conversation. Again, it was a very quick conversation. I ended it with him by saying, hey, if you there in the state police think differently, that you have a different opinion on whether or not criminal charges should be brought, please let me know. He assured me he would. I never heard from him after that. So the very first time, and before we get to what happened at the council meeting where Ms. Solis told you about her conversation with Detective Houston, I did get a phone call, as I said, from Abel advising me that Detective Houston had also spoken with him. I want you all to know that if this were to happen again, I would have done one thing differently. Based on my conversation with Detective Houston, I didn't think this was going to go anywhere. I really thought it was not going to go anywhere. One other thing he told me was that since it had been brought to the state police investigation, they had to look into it, basically stating, you know, I'm doing what I have to do. I did not tell the council, hey, by the way, I want you to know the state police called me and there's an investigation going on. In retrospect, I should have, and in the future, I will. But it was truly because I just thought we would never hear again. Well, lo and behold, we did hear again. So after Ms. Solis made her comment at a public council meeting with regard to what Detective Houston told her as to, well, we're not going to bring criminal charges because the town is not going to support them, I called him the very next day and asked, you know, my intent was to find out, is that the way the conversation really went? Because that's not my understanding of how any police department decides whether or not to bring criminal charges. They don't base it on whether or not the victim is going to... If there are charges, charges will be brought. And then, in terms of involving the victim, if the victim wants to cooperate or not, goes to the issue of how successful you might be and proving beyond a reasonable doubt that the person's guilty, it doesn't at all, or shouldn't, have any bearing on whether the charges are going to be brought in the first place. So in any event, Detective Houston was very quick to say, Mike, I'm sorry, I can't speak with you. You need to speak to my commander. He gave me commander's information. That was Lieutenant Yell. So I got on the phone with Lieutenant Yell and I specifically asked him, did the state police find a basis for bringing criminal charges in this case? He stated, no. And he went on to state, without me asking, it was looked at at the detective level. It was then reviewed by the command staff and it was sent over to the attorney general's office. And he told me, in all three instances, the conclusion was there was no basis that a crime was committed as in a statute was violated that would substantiate charges. Now, I know, and maybe you all know, that when you call the state police, it's like dialing 911. Your conversations are recorded. So I specifically asked Lieutenant Yell. I said, am I able to make public, at a public meeting, the responses you just gave me in terms of three different sets of eyes looked at this? And all three sets of eyes said, there's no basis for criminal charges. He said, absolutely. Well, that's what I did. Before I went on vacation, I sent you a quick memo, three sentences, just wanted to let you know, here's what I found out. I expanded upon it in the memo that's before you tonight. When you look, so there's somewhat of this tension between what Detective Houston put in his public police incident report and what I'm being told by command staff. If you go back and look at Detective Houston's incident report, nowhere does he say a crime has committed. He never says that in his report. He says, well, we're not going to pursue charges because the town doesn't want to pursue charges. Doesn't say a crime has been committed. One of the emails that you received talked about a domestic abuse situation and how if the person who's been abused doesn't want to cooperate, you know, charges aren't brought. That is totally a misstatement of the way things work. I've prosecuted domestic abuse cases. And if there's a basis for charges, the charges are brought. A lot of times, a month, or two months, or three months later, the victim has reconciled, in some cases unfortunate, and no longer wants to cooperate. That doesn't mean the prosecution doesn't go forward because you have the police report. You have all kinds of descriptions of what happened that evening or day, whatever. And you can, in fact, get a conviction even when the victim doesn't even show up. So my point in belaboring this is, I want everyone in the public to understand that a decision to bring charges or not in any given case has absolutely nothing to do with whether or not a victim is going to cooperate. And another example is, the Providence City Council wasn't consulted as to whether they were going to pursue charges against Buddy Siancy. You know, I mean, if charges are going to be brought, they're going to be brought. I feel extremely comfortable and confident about where we are with that. The Rhode Island State Police has closed this matter. There are not going to be any criminal charges. And notwithstanding, for reasons that I cannot explain to you, Detective Houston's comments, I spoke to his lieutenant and I've already described to you what he told me. And he knows I'm making this public tonight on the record, so to speak. So having said all that, I am more than happy to try to answer any questions you may all have about this Rhode Island State Police incident report.
I just appreciate that you will now, going forward, share more information with all of the council as quickly as possible. I know things happen, but I think a lot of this, had we known in August that that was even asked or that subsequently other people...
I don't disagree.
And I appreciate that you say that.
You know, the issue, and this sort of goes into the next topic, the role of the solicitor. Communication, transparency, trust as a foundation is so incredibly key. And you have that when there is lots of communication, when things are shared among everyone. And I've had the privilege of being here in this seat with the town of South Kingstown since 1995. And I'd like to think a lot of that has to do, in addition to the competence and basically keeping the town out of trouble with litigation, et cetera, is because of that communication. And for whatever reasons, and again, in my mind, this is going to amount to nothing. In my mind, it was so small, it wasn't even worthy of letting you all know. Having said that, so going forward, no matter how small I think things are, it's going to be, hey, by the way, wanted to let you know, I don't think anything's going to come of this, but here's what happened. So I can promise you that that's what's going to happen going forward. Completely, that's what's going to happen. So a little bit more about delving into this. The solicitor's role is really determined by the town charter. And it basically is extremely broad. It says the solicitor will represent and defend the town in all actions involving all of its departments, all its boards, all of its commissions. In addition to that, it's the day-to-day relationships and giving legal advice on contracts and RFPs and all of the daily happenings. And you know all this, right? And all you have to do is read my monthly bill to see all of the various things that are being addressed on a continuous basis, on a daily basis. It's also my job to make sure, and I can confidently tell you that of all the cities and towns I've represented over my 35 years, not one counselor has ever been in trouble criminally or ethically. Because it's also my job to make sure you're all staying in compliance with a myriad of different laws, whether it be the OMA, whether it be the Access to Public Records Act, whether it be ethics concerns, et cetera. So I need to be proactive about that. I need to do my best to anticipate when situations might arise and head them off at the pass so that you don't find yourself having to explain yourself later. Rather deal with it upfront. So again, more than happy to answer specific or other questions about the role of the solicitor. If anyone has any questions, please shoot them.
So at the last meeting, which you missed unfortunately, we had a little bit of discussion about sort of the town council president making a regular report, you know, if I get a call from the police or something. Personally, I think that it might be a better idea to have a policy where, you know, the president calls the solicitor and says, you know, the state police called me about this, and then you communicate it.
And you know, again, this goes to the transparent, whenever... So here are my thoughts on that. And I'm well aware of the last meeting, believe me. While I was enjoying Sicily, I understand what the issues were at that last meeting. And Abel, I think that's a good point, whether it's you or anyone. And I pretty much talked to all of you at one time or another about certain things. Make the phone call and then, from there, I can get it out. When it comes from my office, on my stationery, if it needs to be confidential, I can then get that out to all of you so that you are all, in fact, are aware of, you know, something has happened. Now, having said that, each one of you has the ability, under your own rules of conduct, but just under normal procedures, to bring something up at a council meeting, to add something to an agenda, to discuss items. Now, obviously, if they're not on the agenda, I tell you, vote to put it on the agenda, et cetera. But so you all have the ability to do that. And you're all equals, right? Each and every one of you is an equal on that council. Of course, there's a president who has... Someone's going to run the meeting. Someone's going to preside at the meeting. Someone's going to... You know, I think the charter is cute in the language. It says, the president shall be the ceremonial position for the town. But it also makes it very clear that the president runs the meetings. But each and every one of you have the same right as anyone else to do all the things I've been talking about, to speaking, to adding things to the agenda, et cetera. So I will also do my best, in my role, as I'm sitting here listening to what's going on, to lend guidance or direction if, you know, I sense that something is amiss or something's not going right or someone... And Abel, I think you do a pretty good job of pausing and waiting and asking, hey, does anyone else have anything to say? Does anyone else want to comment? I don't see you rushing into, you know, votes or decisions. But having said that, going to be very aware of what's happening on a regular basis at these meetings and outside of these meetings to make sure that each and every one of you is feeling free to do what it is that you want to add to the discussion, the conversation, et cetera. Anything else on that?
We've had a conversation privately, so I do appreciate that you say that. I think it's very common for the community to think, when one holds the title of president, that they are the guiding direction, setting a legislative agenda, so to speak, or whatever. And that has been quite now, made quite clear to everyone. I think to the community, I had a conversation with Amy and with you, that we are all the same and that we would like the same information. That information will not go to Abel. You will not have a conversation with Abel Collins and think that that's a representative of the five of us. I've only been here for 10 months. I think we're pretty unique personalities and differences. And so he doesn't speak for the five of us. I don't speak for the other four. But we need that information to come to all five. He cannot make any decisions. You know, for me, I was taken aback that he was telling the police that, nope, we weren't going to do that. I understand what was said in August. I think it's a very... We're in a very different situation. And I was confused about the tact, not the tactics, but the direction. So going forward, I think the solicitor also should communicate with us, but also provide us with the tools. Because when a community member was removed from this place, we didn't take a vote. Maybe that we should amend the rules. I've never, in all my time, almost 20 years, never seen someone escorted out. And I feel like I've seen a lot of men blow hard at the microphone and not have the same treatment. So again, I don't care what someone has to say. I want them to be treated in the same way. And I think there was a discrepancy there. I also feel like when I was speaking, I was cut off. I wanted to ask a question of the person in the microphone and I was cut off. And I would have appreciated, having been empowered to say, you have the right to ask that community member any question. I want to sometimes ask questions when they stand there. And that doesn't seem to be the protocol we've evolved into. And so I guess I felt underprepared with some of the tools that are available to me and any other member of the town council. So going forward, I just want a little bit more, hey... I got cut off from asking, I had a question that night and I wasn't allowed to ask it.
And I would say this, that if you take tonight as an example, I think that opportunity was afforded in every case with everyone who came up there.
I know, yep. And so those are my main issues. But I also think that we do need to look at some of the rules and the roles so that people are clear and...
We're going to get to that on the agenda. And I'll have some more comments when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else on that? Okay. So the next, the regulation of file, one of the things that comes up here on a regular basis. So just so you know, I'm not wedded to the Narragansett ordinance. I'm glad that Ms. Mahalan has brought up the fact that there are other ordinances in other towns. I mean, I looked at about 15 different ordinances. And in fact, in 2020, showed you some from Barrington and a couple of other places. I'm more than happy to look at the Richmond ordinance, legislation, whatever we need, whatever you want to do. The reason I focused on the Narragansett ordinance is because the person who was speaking to you at the last meeting kept talking in terms of trespass. I thought, well, okay, so if that's what the focus should be this way. But look, there's no perfect ordinance. And if you would like, again, in terms of providing you with as much information as you can, I can compile for you several different options in terms of, if you want to go forward, and you'll have to give me direction if you want to go forward. I can give you several different ordinances and thoughts about what we should do, given that this is South Kingstown and not Narragansett and not Richmond and not Barrington, that this, the agrarian economy and the culture here is so very different from elsewhere. We want to do, of course, we want to do what's right for this town. At the same time, we're looking for a remedy to help people who have neighbors who are not... looking for a remedy to help people who have neighbors who are not kind when it comes to dealing with their animals. So, again, this is coming up later on the agenda, and at that point, you can let me know if you first want to see several other possibilities, and then, at that point, we can decide on what direction we want to go, or whether or not you're ready to go, and I can put something together for the next meeting. So when we get to that point on the agenda, we can get your feedback on that. The final thing is the update in the town manager search. So the consultants would like to meet with you in a work session, and I believe that Colleen got out to you, they're looking at Wednesday, the 3rd, or Thursday, the 4th, whatever's best for the council. The thought is this, they'll sit down with you at a work session, they'll go through with you, you know, a timeline, all that, but more importantly, get from you, at least your preliminary thoughts on what you're looking for, what you think the town needs, et cetera. Now, this will be a session just for the council. At some point in the future, you may very well want to include the public in that conversation, but this is going to start with all of you, which is why it would be a work session. Then while they're here, they'll stay overnight, and the next day, they would like to start speaking. Again, if, I think it makes sense, as long as you all agree it makes sense, they want to start speaking with various town officials, right? They want to talk to department head, they want to start getting feedback, what works here, what doesn't work, what are you looking for, what's your ideal view of a boss, of a manager, et cetera. So they're going to use this opportunity to get feedback first from you, and then from others here in the administration of the town. So one thing, I told them I would let them know first thing tomorrow morning, and since this is an issue of just picking a date, we can do that. Which date do you want to meet? Do you want to, hopefully, one of those two nights works for all of you, either Wednesday, the 3rd, or Thursday, the 4th, it would be at 7:00.
I like the 3rd, 7:00 PM here.
I'm sorry?
I prefer November 3rd at 7:00 PM.
November 3rd, that's my vote.
Anybody else?
I normally have class on Wednesdays, but it's canceled, so Wednesday's good for me.
So is everyone cool with the 3rd? I'll let them know to come that Wednesday, you plan to be here Wednesday evening, then, and we'll set up a workshop session.
I, my daughter just told me about senior band night this morning, and I'm not sure what date she told me. Can I get back to you first thing in the morning, or...
Yeah, again, we can even do this by email without violating any kind of OMA, so before I get back to him, if that's a problem, Jess, send an email that goes around to everyone, only if the 3rd doesn't work. If you say, hey, by the way, I can't do the 3rd, can we do the 4th? Then send the email out. If it's just, hey, I'm fine, just let me know, and I'll let them know. Sound good?
Yep, thanks.
Let us know too, Mike, in case the 4th doesn't work out. What's, in the event the 3rd or the 4th doesn't work out, is there any other option?
I think he also gave me the 9th, and you know, that was kind of starting to push it out there, and I knew you were, I was trying to get him to focus on dates closer rather than later. I'm pretty sure my memory is another night was the 9th. So, well, let's just discuss this right now. If the 3rd and 4th don't work, are you all available on the 9th? That's a Tuesday night.
Does someone here have a problem with the 4th?
She just doesn't know.
The 3rd or the 4th should work for us, Jess is just unsure which one, right?
Okay. So the way we're going to leave this, if there's, obviously, if there's no conflict, it'll be the 3rd. If there's a conflict with the 3rd, we're going to make it the 4th, and there's always the 9th, if for some reason something else had come up. I will tell you that Susan Flynn did tell me that on the 4th, she would just have to move a couple of meetings around to make the council chambers available, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Is that a public meeting that the public can attend, just not participate in?
Correct, it would be a public meeting, all your work sessions are public.
Okay.
And as I said, as part of the schedule of the search process, you very well may decide that you would like an evening where the public gives their input. That'll be all up to you, and we can have that discussion with the consultant on that evening. And unless there are other questions, that would conclude my comments for right now.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to appointments.
I would like to nominate, I wrote her name down, Charlene Trainum, to return to the South Kingstown Housing Authority for another term.
Second.
So moved, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously.
Move. I move to appoint Thomas Marcello and William Rosen to the Route 138 Commission.
Second.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure, discussion.
Why haven't they met? Why has the committee been dormant for nearly 10 years? And is there a reason to reappoint, to continue?
I think...
John might speak to this.
John may know what the delay is, and I can only speak to one of the comments of our applicants, which was DOT pushed it out. John, do you know?
Good evening, John Shark, Public Services Director. So I guess for better or worse, I'm the longest member on the committee. So we had met with RIDOT recently, probably about six months ago, asking them what the status is. They did carve out the Amtrak Bridge. The last I knew, that was getting ready to bid out. They did look at, we went back and revisited the funding that the late Senator Chafee got for us. RIDOT still has that funding, but unfortunately, because of the time that's passed, it's probably only going to be able to cover not even Phase 1, which is from 108 to the Amtrak Bridge. Phase 2 was from the Amtrak Bridge to Route 2. To be honest with you, I don't know if we'll ever see Phase 2 get constructed. So we've asked RIDOT to get back on track and try to get Phase 1 through permitting and get it to construction, and we have not heard back from them as of yet.
Do you feel like there's a need for this committee to stay in place?
So we pretty much vetted just about everything for the entire limits of the project. Now, there's smaller items, one of them is historical lighting in the village, the brick sidewalks. I don't know if we'll get down into the minutia with that committee, that's going to probably be more shop drawings that staff are going to review in conjunction with RIDOT before it goes out to bid. I don't know if there's a whole lot that can be revisited at this point. I mean, I'm pretty much considering it a design freeze from 108 to the Amtrak Bridge.
We had the gentleman here before us who said that he felt like they had completed 90% of their work.
I think that's a fair representation.
I guess my question, let me ask it again, do you need them for the last 10%?
I don't believe so, but I don't, at this point too, I think the committee serves a purpose if there's an issue that RIDOT wants to bring back to the community, and I don't know where that is, in that last 10% of design that needs to get done. So I think the committee, if there are issues that are going to get brought up during that last 10%, I think it does make sense to have the committee available to review those. Any final issues?
So we would reappoint, but they shouldn't expect a meeting in the next month, that would be, if needed.
On an as-needed basis.
So we can make that clear to the people who are sitting on this committee for 20 years, and, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously.
We also got an email from Doral Beasley, who serves on that committee, and he would like to be reappointed. He provided a lengthy email, but does not, he's been on since 2001, we could easily reappoint him.
Right, but he would need to come in for his interview and tell us why he wants to, if we're going to continue with this. If we're not, we need to make that decision, right? So if you're suggesting we reappoint Doral Beasley without him coming before us, if that's everybody's wish, okay, but if we're going to require people to come before us, we need to require everyone to come before us, not carve out people we might be familiar with, you might be familiar with, or I might be familiar with, and nobody else is. I just feel like the standardization of this process needs to be, needs to happen or not. Either we, as a council, need to say, we don't need to speak to anybody, just send your application and we'll make a decision, or we have to bring people forth for an interview to see what the level of interest is, and if there's something we feel like is a good fit for them, that's all.
So I think, I had asked about this when we appointed Nate Merrill to, and when I asked, I was told, you don't have to interview someone, you can appoint anyone at any point.
But we had interviewed him.
This council had not interviewed him.
I know I had, but, I agree, I agree. What's the policy?
So I think we need to know what the expectation is going forward.
Correct. Maybe tonight's not the time to decide that. Maybe tonight, we appoint the people we have interviewed and leave this discussion for another time, but I just feel like, you know, we can't pick and choose who we want to, who we're going to talk to. If we're going to talk to people, we need to talk to everyone.
But I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we could appoint, we could vote to appoint, and if someone's not comfortable appointing them without an interview, they could, they could vote no. I see your point, and I think we do need something set in place going forward, but that is how it stands right now. It's not that there's not anything in place, anybody can appoint anyone, or move to appoint anyone at any time, with or without an interview.
I like Doral, I'd like to bring him in and hear from him.
We did conduct an interview for somebody who we can appoint tonight, if we thought that they were a good candidate, Affordable Housing Collaborative.
So I, I'll make a motion to appoint Megan Sparks to the Affordable Housing Collaborative.
Second.
Moved, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously.
So, so let me just do what I said I was going to do five minutes ago. I know you know this, but if there's a council member who wants to make a motion to appoint someone, you are free to make a motion. If there's a second, then there needs to be discussion and then a vote.
I'll make a resolution appointing Meg Healy and Roland Benjamin to the Canvassing Board Authority as alternate members.
Second.
So moved, discussion?
Just going to say it one more time, I think they should be brought in for an interview. I'm not opposed to either of them, I don't want you to think I'm opposed, I'm just trying to nail down this process.
Further discussion? I mean, I have to agree with you, Deb, on this point, again, I think this is a pretty important committee. One of the nominating authorities didn't follow the rules and didn't nominate a sufficient number of people for us to review, and I would like to see processes like this follow the course that is dictated by statute and policy, so I won't be able to vote in support of this.
I think we discussed at the work session this topic, right? Or did we talk about it? I can't remember when, this feels like a long time ago. This position is an alternate position, this position would only be elevated to a full position by the vote of the council at another time, should it warrant, I'm very comfortable putting forth the two names, they were given to us by the respective political parties. I look at the number of things that we need to accomplish in the next three months, and while it's not a lot to interview five more people, two more times, so 10 more interviews, we did that with the school committee, it's just, it's just more time, and for an alternate, I'm comfortable, and finally, we, this council put forth one, put forth one name to put the Democratic appointee in to full membership, John Rose, he's been appointed, without any discussion, without any of this, how important the elections are for a full member, and now for alternates, we're sort of gummed up in the works.
Any further discussion? All right, let's take the roll.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Nay.
Councilwoman Rose?
Aye.
Council Vice President McIntyre?
Aye.
Council President Collins?
Nay.
Thank you. All right, any further appointments? There is B, a resolution appointing members to serve the town's 300th anniversary.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11B.
I'll second.
So moved. Sorry, you're looking at me like...
Yes, just one item, there was one additional name added that was inadvertently left off, so there are 18 applicants, all recommended, it was Joe Veely's name, that was not on the original memorandum, which we're requesting that that be included in this list.
So, I'll amend my original motion to include Joe Veely as an additional member, included on the list for the steering committee.
And will we have the opportunity to appoint again? Are we still accepting applications, I guess is my first question, so if people are just hearing about this, this committee does not have any parameters, right, as far as size? We get 10 more people that say, I want to be involved, we can put 10 more people on this committee at any time.
Correct. That's right, and we've extended the deadline through the month of November, so the public is encouraged to go onto the website, there's a link, they can do it right online. As far as we're concerned, the more involvement in the steering committee, the more successful the year-long celebration will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to new business, new business, item 12C, a resolution authorizing an amendment of an award of bid to New England Building and Bridge of Providence for the Matunik Beach Road Protection Improvement, Phase 2 project, in an amount not to exceed $2,927,910, including a $200,000 contingency. Further detailed in a memo from the Public Services Director to the interim town manager dated October 19th.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 12C.
I'll second.
So moved. Discussion, I see John walking up to the podium, so I do, it's a big dolly.
I can make one comment, I had an error in the resolution, it's actually not an amendment to award a bid, it is the award a bid. So if I could just have that corrected, I would appreciate it.
I'll amend my original motion to remove the words, quote unquote, "an amendment."
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
All right, second.
Any further discussion? All right, anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. 12D is a resolution extending the town's declaration of emergency, adopted at an emergency se- session on March 15, 2020, subsequently renewed on April 13, May 11, June 8, July 13, August 11, September 14, October 13, November 9, December 14, all of 2020, then January 11, January 25, February 22, March 22, April 26, May 24, June 28, July 26, August 10, and September 13, as shown on the exhibit.
Rory McInte, I'll make a motion to approve 12D.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion?
I just, I think a lot of people question, and I've asked you to remind us of this before, but for people who, you know, haven't caught that in the past, could you just very quickly explain why this is still needed? I support it. I just want to make sure that people aren't thinking that we're just going through the motions, that there is a reason behind it.
Absolutely. For all intents and purposes, at this point in the COVID-19 pandemic, this is really to follow suit with the governor's declaration of emergency. And for the most part, it is to make sure that the town does not miss out on any reimbursements from federal allocations while we're still within the pandemic. And similar to the funds that we've received through American Rescue Plan, those types of things.
And I was simply going to add, the other practical thing it does, it helps our local businesses because as long as we continue in this state, they're able to do things under zoning they wouldn't ordinarily be able to do, like, you know, having the outdoor seating. And those types of arrangements that were made to accommodate the COVID crisis will continue as long as this order is... So that's another reason why you'd want to just keep it in place.
Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimously. 12E is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Max-R Corporation of Sussex, Wisconsin, for the purchase of 24 recycling receptacles in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $17,820, further described in a memo from the interim Director of Parks and Recreation to the interim Town Manager dated October 19.
Rory McInte, I'll make a motion to approve 12E.
I'll second.
Moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimously. 12G is the town council may discuss and propose amendments to the town council's rules of conduct, as shown on Exhibit 2.
It might be helpful if I begin because during public comment, the rule number 10 was specifically brought up. And so let's, let me just give you a little bit of background for your information. So legally, the only time that a town council, a city council, needs to allow public comment is for anything that's advertised as a public hearing. You cannot prevent the public from participating because it's a public hearing. Everything else on the agenda is up to your discretion in terms of whether you want comment, whether it's new business, whether it's communications, any of your agenda. Now, why is that? I mean, traditionally, the reason for that is that we are a representative democracy. We're a republic. You are elected by the people to make all these decisions that you make. So that's why there's not a specific legal requirement that says for each of your agenda items, you may take public comment. Having said that, every town council handles this differently. And it's really up to you to decide how you want to handle it, whether you want to have the opportunity for public comment at each and every item, or just new business items, or just communication items. And regardless of whatever rule you decide on, at any given meeting, on any given topic, if a majority of you wants to change the rule or hear somewhat, of course you can do that. So you have the discretion. So it's up to you to discuss and decide how you want to proceed.
So in my experience on the council and beforehand, it's always been the practice that new business items, the president would invite discussion for issues that seemed particularly worthy, or when there was somebody in the audience who had something very valuable to add. I think it's worked fairly well. It's more than I've experienced in going to other councils, certainly. But if we want to make it more open, we actually had this discussion early on when we talked about our rules, I believe, and we talked about having a motion if we wanted to invite public comment as a council as a whole. I still think that that's perfectly allowable under normal rules and what we practice anyway. But I don't know how it would be changed.
I feel like when we say we can make an emotion and we can invite public comment, it benefits the people who hear it today that they learned something. But in three weeks, someone would be like, "Oh, I missed that," or "I can't comment, so I won't, I don't think I can participate." So I feel like I would rather it be spelled out that they could, rather than it be at our discretion that we could pick and choose, because then it sort of seems whimsical and someone could wait two hours and then they don't get that opportunity. I don't know. I do know that when we first started on the council, I did bring up that I would like people to speak on a new business item. It's important to the community, some community members to speak on those items. So I would like it to be more structured, rather than we can vote at any time, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't know who's in the audience who would want to speak. I've also seen in the past where people come and ask the town manager a question, or they have a question that comes as a result of that. So I just want to make sure that the public has multiple opportunities to ask a question because once the ship has sailed of community comment, most people don't necessarily stay. They might have a question. And I don't know.
So I think that's what community comment is for. We put community comment intentionally before new business items so we can hear the thoughts of the community prior to any new topic being discussed. I think we have brought in folks during a discussion of a new business item. That happens. People, we know there's people in the audience that are material, you know, have info that we would like to hear. I don't see any reason to make it, to say at every new business item, does anybody in the public want to speak? I don't see the need for that. I think anybody who wants to speak on a new business item has that opportunity during community comment.
I guess, what if they have a question about something that is said? So they wouldn't know to ask that question until, I'm just going to pull John Schott because he just was here. John says something, and that sparks a question from a community member. They don't have the opportunity to ask that question. That might be the time where, I don't think we should say, "Would anyone like to speak on item 12A, 12B?" But I think that the public should know that they could. And it shouldn't be because we voted one time to allow it, then they have to hope that the next time on some other item, we do it for them. I don't think that's what it's about.
I think, I think a lot of people who come to these meetings are aware that the segment reserved there for comments from interested citizens is the opportunity to speak as it relates to anything on the agenda or just anything at all. And I think that one of the goals, or some of the goals of the council are to, you know, obviously, run efficient meetings, be transparent, and operate in a good manner. But I just don't think that if we opened up every new business item to communication from interested citizens, that I think it would overburden the meetings, not make them efficient, make them last a lot longer. And I just, I don't think what we're doing currently is some sort of like an ad hoc determination. I like the idea of if we can get a majority of a council to decide that a specific item should be open to the public, I think that's okay. I think it's known and it's good practice to keep comments from residents at the time reserved for comments from interested citizens. I think that's the best way to run efficient meetings, run it transparently. I just think if we open every single item up for potential comment, it's just going to make meetings overburdensome, over inefficient. Greg, come on up here if you want to.
Rule breaker.
What's happening here?
There's been a lot of comments made after public's comments that certainly generate questions in my mind, and I don't think I'm the only one. I don't think you have to say, "Is there any public comment after every topic taken or talked about?" But certainly, everybody should have the opportunity to come up and respond. John said something a little bit earlier that I didn't realize. I forgot who else until... But this happens most every meeting. Something's said, and I'm thinking, "Oh, shit." Excuse me. Thinking, "I can't get up and say something else." And you got to take notes and bring it up at the next meeting. I think you lose some of your effectiveness. So that's my two cents.
So notwithstanding Greg's comments, I do believe that we do have a good process in place. I think we run efficient meetings. I think the time reserved for interested citizens is a good area to have, you know, any comment of any nature from anyone, limited to five minutes. And usually, discretion of the president allows them to come up multiple times. I just think that works well for us. And I think if we want to open up business items, I like the idea of getting a majority of the council to allow for that. And I just, I don't think that opening every single item up for discussion from anybody is a good idea.
So how would that work? So how would the member of the public who has a question indicate to us that we need to then take a vote to ask them to speak? So like Greg just did, we're going to raise our hand, then we're going to say, "Do we allow?" And then take a vote every time?
I think that's it. And it's frequent enough that when somebody wants to speak on a new business item, you know, with passion, they do raise their hand in general.
It's not always with certainty, but from our experience up here, you can always get a good idea of which business items will draw a lot of attention and which ones generally don't. Routine authorizations related to contracts and things like that, we don't expect to get a lot of communication. Whereas other items, like the chickens, for example, we would expect to get a lot of solicited interest and things like that, so.
I know it doesn't say this, but could we talk about removing people or escorting them from the room? Because I think that should take a majority vote as well. I don't, I think that it says that you enforce order and decorum. Maybe the removal of, you know, you could say, "You can return to your seat," but maybe removal requires a majority vote? Because, you know, it just doesn't seem, it just seems a little arbitrary.
I don't think what occurred with that woman was anything routine, right? She had her five minutes to speak. We all listened. We all listened, just like every other citizen. She came to the podium and spoke for five minutes. It's when she refused to obey the rules, which was, "You've spoken for five minutes." She kept shouting. I was trying to speak. I said to her four or five times, "I am speaking now." She refused to allow that. What happened with her was, I think, the president had a duty to remove her from this chamber. She was, she was out of control. And we let it go on for a little while. She wasn't removed immediately. You can go back and watch it. The chief came and stood behind her for a few, you know, I don't know, a minute or so, I bet if we timed it, while she continued to shout. That's not how we conduct business here. We listen to everybody. But when someone's out, clearly out of control, they need to be removed. And I think the president, in his capacity, whatever clause this is that said he would maintain decorum, was well within his rights to say to Joe, you know, she's, this woman clearly needed to be removed.
I've seen other people be very belligerent, combative, angry. I don't espouse any of the views that some people conduct themselves under. However, I do feel, as a woman, that woman was treated a little differently than I've seen many men come up in my time, 20, since 1999. So I've been over there for a really long time, and I've seen yelling and all of that. And I don't disagree with having her sit down, or your characterization of she was combative. However, as a council, we could decide, and I think it would have probably helped to maybe deescalate the situation, to say, "We need to decide if you're going to stay in the room and participate, or you not." I feel like we missed an opportunity to settle that down. I also feel like other men have been up there pounding a lot on the thing. And that, and the treatment of a woman was very different, and it was very intimidating for the chief to do that. It would be intimidating to me just thinking about it. So I don't think that's the solution. And I want to have a better, more thoughtful response, should it ever happen again. And I think taking a pause would have probably given Abel a moment to breathe, and then we might have not handled it the way it was. And that would have given a de-escalation of that moment. So that's how I feel. I don't think removal by one person, should it be a different person in that chair who was more arbitrary, we would be dealing with a lot more stuff. He has typically been very even. So, but we've seen what unbridled people can strive to do in the world. So you put the person in there who doesn't have that skill set, and the council as a majority would serve as a check.
I think where I beg to differ with you is, she had five minutes at the podium where she did rant and rave for five minutes. Wasn't, wasn't under control during her allotted five minutes. It became a problem at minute 10, right? That's when it became a problem. Anybody who wants to shout anything at me for five minutes, have at it, right? I'm listening. But when you will not allow the conversation to move forward after your time to give your opinions, that's when there's a problem. The problem isn't in the five minutes. Anybody can say anything. And people do get passionate, and that's okay. It was post that that was the issue, not during that. I don't think this was gender-related in any capacity. This was someone who clearly did not want me to speak. She wanted to control my narrative, and I'm not okay with that.
I think it's best not to discuss, like, particular instances and to think of it as just a policy discussion. I mean, that was the only time, hopefully ever, I have to request that somebody be removed from these council chambers. It's not something that I look forward to, not a power that I relish at all as a president. I hope it's not a power any president relishes. But there has to be some way to, you know, remove problematic people from the council chambers. And I think that it would, I just think the mechanics of making... of making a vote happen, to do it, might not serve in the heat of the moment very well. I think, I mean, people can get violent, and, you know, calls need to be made at that point. And I, you know, having it be a subject of a vote is, is gonna make it difficult.
So, I think taking this specific situation off the table, there needs to be something going forward where it can't be misconstrued as, we can't, I don't want people to ever think that we're picking and choosing who we're deciding to remove from a meeting. So, I think as a protection to the council, so that someone can't say back, come back and say, oh, just because it's so-and-so, you had them removed. So let's get ahead of that. Let's get ahead of it now. And, you know, if someone's asked to take their seat, and they don't, we immediately go to a vote. I don't see how taking that extra 10 seconds, 15 seconds, I just, it shouldn't be up to one person to decide who gets to stay and who does not.
Mike, do you have any experience with any other communities that would vote?
There was one other community where someone had to be removed, and it was a little different from this situation, because the person, and it was a male, for what it's worth, the person was approaching the council dais, so to speak. And it was very threatening. And of course, the police chief immediately got up, and the chairman of the council was, you know, banging the gavel. As a matter of fact, the gavel broke. The chairman was banging it so hard. But that was clearly, and I think, I'm trying to also get away from what happened in particular, and look at it from a policy standpoint. You know, obviously, if someone is so overly passionate and starts actually approaching the table, you don't want to stop and take a vote at that point, right? So this is a very hard and a difficult thing. On the positive side, on the positive side, for all the time I've been privileged to be here, I have never seen that at a council meeting here in South Kingstown, ever. That's the first time I saw where an officer had to actually, at a council meeting, walk someone out of a meeting. I've just, and I can't fathom it happening again, but I suppose it could. But there is this balance about, so if someone's threatening as opposed to just screaming, then it's okay to, for the council president, say, you need to be removed, versus someone who just won't stop, you know, talking and sitting down. And so, how do you start writing that into the rules, right? So, it's tough. Part of it is, you all elect one of you to preside at the meeting, and I guess you give some credence to the fact that, well, that person's going to run the meeting, they'll do the right thing, so to speak. And, you know, if the person doesn't do the right thing on more than one occasion, you of course have the ability to change that person. So, I don't know if that was helpful or not. I just, it's going to be difficult to come up with a rule that's specific enough. I understand, you know, Deb Burgner, you're talking about, not only would she be moved, but you wanted to ask a question, and you didn't have the opportunity to ask that question, so maybe, you know, she shouldn't have been removed, versus someone who's more of a threatening-type situation. Yeah. It's hard. It's hard. I suppose someone, you know, again, one of the ways to handle it, I'm just thinking out loud, is if the president says to the officer in the room, this person needs to be removed, you know, one of you, I suppose, could say, well, wait a minute, hold on, let's, you know, so-and-so, please sit down so we don't have to go there. I mean, it's the heat of the moment, right? All of this is second guessing. It's all, normally though, the general rule normally is, the president of a council, or the chairman of a council, presides over the meeting and makes those types of decisions. That would be the normal rule, so to speak. But again, you're free to try to change things around. And again, wow, that was something I've never seen, and hopefully will never see again, especially here in South Kingstown.
I would say that I have seen men come to the podium and do that.
Oh, I know exactly who you're talking about. I can actually quote some of the words a gentleman has actually made at the podium, which were not pretty words.
And I've seen them insult the president, do all of that, and that was, it, there is a gender piece where we're holding someone's shrill voice, is how they describe people, or, you know, those are very gendered criticisms. And so, I...
Obviously, gender should never come into play, ever, ever, ever.
But that's the standard. When a woman is talking, she's shrill and complaining. She's not advocating, she's not being assertive, she's this. So, I just have heard, I have heard it happen, men don't get exited as this happens. So we need to think about, removal requires a different thing. Keeping order, you keep order. You sit down, thank you very much, you have five minutes, your five minutes is up. It's very different. When you're taking the step of saying, you can no longer participate in the meeting at all, ever you're going, it's a different situation than, please sit down, this is whatever disruptive, you can remain in the room and sit, but you're not, there's options. Like, there's levels of response, and I think when you're going to go to removal, and saying to someone, you can't participate in the democracy that we have, it should have, that's all, that piece, not the, tell them to sit down, be quiet, go down, whatever. That is the gatekeeper role. But that's just my opinion.
And, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion about this gender issue. I would just like to say, if any man wants to come here and behave in the same manner, they will be asked to leave. I hope that that does not happen as well. But the rules of decorum and maintaining order need to be followed for us to have productive meetings. And whoever the president is, they need to be able to exercise the authority to remove people, if it's necessary.
So if the president does remove somebody, is there a way for the council to bring them back? Because that is a one-person decision, and there's five people.
If that, that person hasn't been banned from ever attending a council meeting.
Well, they were removed from the meeting, and they couldn't participate or attend. So, that was a one-person decision when there's five of us. So, could, if a majority of the council...
A majority can always, under Robert's rules, under your own rules, of course, a majority can always overrule. Someone can always question the action of a chair in any organization that's following the rules. So if a majority of this council questions a ruling of the chair, of course you can, yes. You can.
So that goes back to when I tried to say something, and I was cut off and said I didn't, I didn't have permission to speak, and I wasn't recognized, I didn't have that.
And, you know, as you're saying that, and you'd have to go back and look at the meeting, the turmoil at the time was such that I don't even remember you trying to ask a question, because it was a little bit crazy. But yes, clearly, a majority of you always has the right to overrule the chair. That's, that's the democracy we live in. Those are the rules we live by. Otherwise, you'd have authoritarianism, you'd have dictatorship. That's not the way a public body works.
So when the person was removed, they were afforded the chance to participate in this democracy. They had their five minutes at the podium. They weren't removed for that. That's where the disconnect is here. They participated, just like any other member of the public, for five minutes. It's when they would not conform to the norms in this room that the escalation began. No one's democratic rights were squelched. Everyone gets five minutes at the podium.
I'll just weigh in here. I think the instances in which someone would be removed is so rare, that I've, this is the first time I've seen it in my term and a half here on the council, and I've never seen it in any other meeting I've ever attended, that I think that when the situation arises, it should rest in the discretion of the president, because I don't believe it could arise in a situation where there would be enough time to say, let's take a vote, and then at the result of a vote, the person be removed. I think at that point in time, for us to even have a vote, the person would have to have stopped doing whatever conduct that they've been doing, which is disturbing the meeting. So I think that because it's such a rare situation, and it comes about in a way in which, like, it should be acted upon immediately, I think that power should vest with the president. And I think that's the best way to expedite it. And I don't think that it should take a majority of the council to make that decision. I think that just prolongs something in a very unique, unusual situation where it's not necessary.
All right. Are there other matters to discuss under this item? All right. Well, I appreciate, you know, the discussion. I think these are tough issues, tough to craft policies that, you know, allow us to run an effective meeting, and also, you know, give unlimited rights to speech to people here. So we try to walk a good line, where, you know, at least it's my practice to allow people to speak a lot. And I, you know, in general, it seems to work out, so we'll continue that policy. Item 12H is, the town council may discuss and propose consideration of an ordinance establishing regulations on foul. So this is not actually talking about any specific ordinance. In order to pass an ordinance, we would of course need to publicly notice that, and go through a whole public hearing process. This is just, you know, we've heard about Narragansett's ordinance. We got a little information about Richmond from, you know, interested citizen. To be honest, I think that Richmond ordinance sounds a lot more conducive to our situation here. So, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Can I ask a question? Terry, we had mentioned during the first discussion, when the folks were here who are having the issue, the most recent issue, to have the animal control officer go down and speak to the offending party? Do you know if that happened? For us, just to see if there's any resolution for the folks who are being inundated with turkeys.
I am aware that the chief of police did speak to the complainant regarding the issues with, that they were having, and advised that they should be documenting any impact that, or instances when there's, there are animals on their property, or any, anything caused by the animals that damage or whatnot on the property. I don't know if he's, he attempted to speak with the property owner, but I don't know if that actually, a conversation actually transpired beyond that. I would have to get back to the chief and get clarification on that.
Thank you. So my feeling on this is, I'd like more. I'd like more. Richmond's ordinance, does Charlestown have one? Does Westerly have one? I'd like more.
So I have a question. The Narragansett ordinance, could we do that? Because, and then do the enabling legislation and do Richmond, so that one, I'm trying to provide a better solution quickly to the community, because you, you know, there was a lot of people who were upset about it. Interestingly, I know, I got an email in the meeting from the property owner, and she broke her wrist running to get a broom to shoo one of the kitchen chickens. So, now she's, she was afraid to be hurt, now she was hurt. I want to do, I want to have a solution quickly, and then maybe the Richmond enabling legislation model would be a better long-term solution, a better fit. But I feel like we need to do something now, quickly, even though it's going to be a public hearing, and it's going to take time. I just feel like we're not giving this person enough tools. And others. I mean, it's an issue in the community that people, chickens are in other people's yards. It's not show chickens, and it's not monitoring the number of chickens. It's chickens and turkeys in other people's yards, where they can't enjoy their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. So, I don't know. Does, is one route quicker?
Whatever, whatever direction you want me to take, that's why this is on the agenda, for you to give me direction as a council, as to how you'd like to proceed.
I think we should get a little more information, maybe some other ordinances from neighboring towns, like Deb Kelsall suggested. I think this is something that'll have an impact vastly on maybe more things than we're just considering. I know we want to deter conduct specific to what the resident had explained to us at a council meeting, but enacting an ordinance relative to restriction on traveling chickens, I guess, would have vast impact. So I think we do need to get it right the first time. I don't think it's wise to enact one ordinance, and then decide, oh, let's see how this works, and then just do another one, and kind of prospectively try to fit it. I think we should really vet it, get it right. And I'd like to see more information as well. Mike?
I just want to add that, in looking at the Narragansett ordinance, section B talks about barking, making noises. I don't want to get into a situation where we're telling people we can't, they can't have roosters. So I really, while we're talking about this, don't care for that part. Section A, I think that, you know, it's unlawful to allow or permit any animal to trespass on private or public property so as to damage or destroy any property or thing of value, and such trespass is hereby declared to be a nuisance. Any such animal may be impounded by the animal control officer. Something as simple as that for right now, I think, that just makes sense. Why, why is it okay for people to let their animals destroy other people's property? I don't understand why something simple like that can't be considered now. And if we have to amend or add to going forward, then we do that, if it comes up. But I think this issue is about property being destroyed I'm just, I'm just curious about enabling legislation. To me, that sounds like...
That would take, there's no question, the gentleman, we obviously is not into session until January. session until January, and both houses would have to adopt it. Now, I will tell you, it would be very routine. It would probably pass without any problems. Usually, when a municipality asks for enabling legislation, they get it. However, having said that, yes, it's obviously going to take time.
Months.
It will take months, yes, because they won't get it till, you could pre-file it. They won't get it until the end of December or so. Has to go through the process, the hearing process, and ultimately, if both houses adopt it, it would have to go to the governor. So yes, that's going to take some time, no question about it. I mean, I could do this. I could look at, you know, I'm aware of other communities, like Narragansett, where the ordinances did not require enabling legislation. Certainly, and I understand the need to move on this quickly, I could certainly have for you for the next meeting, you know, several options, both with and without enabling legislation, and you can pick and choose if that's what you'd like to do. You just all tell me what you want me to do, I'll be happy to help you out.
So, Mike, we wouldn't need enabling legislation because this type of thing is...
Well, it depends. No, no. It's not, not for every ordinance. It depends for the specific powers that were granted to Richmond, there was a need for enabling legislation. So if we use that format, I would simply take that same legislation and amend it to add South Kingstown, right? It would be that easy, but it would still have to go through the process.
And in the meantime, this woman is now...
In the meantime, we don't have anything on the books.
Yeah. So that's why I hear what you're saying, to put the ordinance out and then amend it and fix it, but I'm like, there's people, many people, who are bothered by chickens, turkeys on their property. I have a lot of sympathy for someone who can't enjoy the home that they own or the place that they're living on, because it's full of turkey poop, chicken poop, chickens, turkeys, and they're injuring themselves. Or they're trying to do the right thing, as we've advised them to do, shoo them away, and they're hurt. So I don't really want to be dragging this out till June. That's why I asked, is there a shorter fix and then a better long-term solution? And I don't know the answer to that, but I feel like, to me, I'd rather do, try something and then fix it with the appropriate legislation. It's going to be June before we get it back.
One possibility is for me to give you at the next meet, I'm obviously listening to what everyone's saying here. I could give you a proposal for next meeting, which would be short-term, and at the same time, I can give you the long-term. So I can put them both in front of you, and then you can decide which direction you want to take, if that's what you desire.
So my next question is, we have no municipal court. We have enabling legislation that affords us that, but we do not have one in place. So an ordinance with no teeth, right? Where would we go? Where would we go with the fine?
We'd go to Rhode Island District Court. It's a longer, more drawn-out process, but we'd go to District Court, yes. Washington County District Court.
So if we find someone $75 and they don't pay, we go to Rhode Island District Court with that $75 non-payment claim?
So...
Is that worth it?
You know, a lot of times, the fact that there is the possibility of a court hearing and/or a fine, et cetera, serves as the incentive to do the right thing. I do agree, obviously, the chief and I have spoken. The chief's hands are tied right now because he doesn't have the tools that he needs, so...
So I just want to return to what Jess said, because she's suggested an actual, very sort of simple, short-term solution. If we wanted and people like that up here, we could just ask Mike to prepare a draft ordinance, saying that same thing, that we could review at the next meeting, and then...
And you'd have to do an order of notice? So you're looking at perhaps the end of November?
I mean, I'd like to think that we can go with least restrictive here, and that once people see that we're taking this step, they realize that, hey, we're serious, and this is what we're offering now, but if it continues, you know, I don't want to jump to having to find people or District Court, whatever. If we can do least restrictive and that works, that's what we should do.
And so just to clarify, I think Rory was questioning whether it was just 8A, or were there other parts?
I think A is appropriate. Just A. Just A.
And the reason A would work is because there is, in that case, a remedy, which is the animal can be basically taken away by the animal control officer. And we don't have to worry about court or anything like that. It's just pretty straightforward.
So if the chicken or the turkey is impounded, do they pay a fine to get the chicken released to them? Or no? That's not in here. How does that work? I mean, if you pound, you have to pay like your rabies shot or whatever?
I can add, you know, I can add something to that that talks about, you know, pay the expenses thereof or something.
I don't, I didn't, I don't know if that's, that was a question.
Are we equipped to deal with impounded chickens?
There is a farm in the northern part of the state that will take in any chicken that is impounded from any municipality.
Well, I mean, that is all a discussion that we could have at the public hearing.
Right. In the meantime, I'll have a discussion with the chief again, obviously, and we'll try to work out these details.
So I guess my question for folks at the council here is, do we want Mike to come back with a draft ordinance at the next meeting that we can then advertise? Okay.
I get the consensus, and I understand what you're looking for.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to item I. "The Town Council May Discuss an Act Relative to the Closed State Police Incident Report, Number 21 RIX-1360-OF, Questioning the Outcome of the Town's Investigation of the AFL/CIO Mailer and Whether Criminal Charges Should Be Filed."
I think that we've discussed this to death at this point, and as I said, I don't want to give her any more of our time or attention.
Someone's raising their hand. You can...
Yeah, what do you guys want to do?
I vote that we have the community members speak. Second?
Come on up. The mailer, because I think you've done everything you need to do with the mailer. I just want to, I just have a question. You know, a lot of times when you do investigations, the investigation leads to something else, leads to something else, leads to something else, and people get convicted of something that is nothing to do with the original investigation. It's something else that was uncovered along the way. So, Mike, my only, I should address this to you, but my only question is on the report. I just, for my own peace of mind, I want to know what this means, is where it says, "It was determined that due to the computer," not the mailer, "the computer in the email being owned by the town of South Kingstown, their town council must decide, as the victim of the case, to pursue a further criminal investigation and formal charges." So my question is, are you saying, Mike, when you had that discussion with the state police, that they say that there is absolutely no criminal intent with the computer in the email system? It's not just the mailer that too?
Context, that entire report all wraps around the AFL/CIO mailer issue. You say maybe there's something else out there that'll be discovered.
Well, no, the state police said that. But they said you didn't want to pursue it. So what I'm just saying is, is it was determined that due to the computer and email being owned by the town of South Kingstown, their town council must decide, as the victim of the case, to pursue a further criminal investigation and formal charges. So that has nothing to do with the mailer. That has everything to do with the computer and email that was used in the process of all this happening. So that's my only question.
It's hard for me to respond, other than to say that, in my opinion, in my advice to this council, that's all wrapped around the mailer. The computer being wiped and the fact that the town owns it was in connection with the mailer, and that's what that particular state police investigation was about. I'm going to leave it at that. It was just a...
I guess my question and then is, shouldn't you want to know if there was a criminal intent here when they used the computer and the email in that fashion? It seems like that is still an open question.
Not according to Lieutenant Yell with regard to the mailer.
That's right. Regards to the mailer, not the computer and the hard drive.
We had said, Rory Mackinty had said that he was, if there was another crime, we would be willing, we can take a vote to cooperate. So is that what this is here, item I? It's a question. So do we make a motion that should other criminal information come to light, that we are a willing cooperative witness, the town of South Kingstown? Is that what this item I is?
So I have a suggestion along those lines, that if something like that comes up, it will be obviously brought to your attention, and then you can deal with it, as opposed to doing anything prospectively.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right, very good.
The motion that we continue past 11.
I'll second.
So moved. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. That does bring us to the end of the public agenda tonight. Need a motion to move into closed executive session.
This is a short one, so I'll make this motion. I make the motion to move to a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246, 5A2, to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, Ari Leska versus South Kingstown Town Council.
So moved. Any discussion?
Just a question. I'm happy to go to executive session. However, is it not possible to do it next week? Because I'm looking at the time, and it's, I got...
I believe we can be very quick in this.
Okay.
Executive session.
This is more informative. It's along the transparency, information. And we could stay right in this room?
Motion second. Anyone opposed?
Oh, sorry. Terry's telling me because of the streaming and everything, we cannot stay in this room. Sorry about that.
All right. We still need to have that vote. Okay, so nobody opposed. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Are we on, Susan?